Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, April 3rd, 2023, and this is a regular meeting of the City at Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kerzak, would you please call the meeting to order?
Yes, this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the back of the building. I will ask everyone with a cellphone or any other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of this meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. For your viewing pleasure, as you wish, please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
James Benano.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
Eric Gallopo.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Daniel Shanameo.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Michael Gunnin.
Here.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert is absent, and Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Here. I'd just like to make one announcement before we start. For all of the planning board members and professionals, Mr. Lambert has handed in his resignation as vice chair, and this was a planned event. So he's moving on to the next phase of his life, and we thank him for all of his, all the work that he's given us, all the work that he's done on the master plan, on all the different committees that he's done. He's always been a very, very anxious contributor. So we thank him for his service, and we will be, more to come later. Okay. On the agenda, we have, our first item on the agenda is resolution for 614 Cookman Avenue, block 2404, lot 6. Does anyone have any concerns about that? Okay, if not, then can I get a motion to, for, to pass, to accept the resolutions of 614 Cookman Avenue?
Second.
Second? Anyone?
Second.
Okay, next resolution is 917 Third Avenue?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
James Benano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Daniel Shanameo.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Michael Gunnin.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Yes. Oh, actually, I have to abstain because I was not at all the meetings.
Yeah, did she call you just now?
She did, yes.
I was not at all 614.
Yeah, no. The eligible members are Jim Henry, Jennifer Souter, John Moore, Rick Lambert, who's no longer with us, Yvonne Clayton, James Benano, Eric Gallopo, and Michael Gunnin. And I believe, yeah, then, let's do it over. Let's go, use your resolution that I sent you to. Go, unless, we differ.
No, we don't differ. We are, Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
John Moore.
Yes.
Yes.
Rick Lambert, which is not here, Yvonne Clayton.
Yes.
James Benano.
Yes.
Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
Michael Gunnin.
Yes.
Okay, we have 917 Third Avenue, block 302, lot 11. The only item that I requested that we add to this is the pre-construction, the request for a pre-construction meeting.
If we can do that verbally now, while you're at it, and I'll type it in tomorrow, because when you sent me that email, I was already gone.
That's okay. That's the only, that's the only request that I believe that, I don't know if anybody else has anything else?
Sorry.
Are we okay?
That's fine.
Yes.
No, I can tell you who's eligible.
Yep, that'd be great.
Eligible members are Jim Henry, Jennifer Souter, John Moore, Yvonne Clayton, Barbara Kerzak, and Daniel Shanameo.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So.
I'm sorry, the resolution?
So.
Second.
Okay. And the eligible members that can vote are, oh, I'm sorry, I don't know why I'm getting these emails all the time. Okay. Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
John Moore.
Yes.
Yvonne Clayton.
Yes.
Barbara Kerzak.
Yes.
Daniel Shanameo.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Thank you.
Okay. All right, our first item up is 1012 Asbury Avenue Redevelopment Plan.
Okay, I think that's me.
Hello.
That's you.
Hi, my name's Beth McManus. I'm a planning consultant working for the city.
Beth, let's get you sworn.
Yeah.
It's only square testimony, giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and tell us your affiliations with the application.
Sure. My name's Elizabeth McManus, M-C-M-A-N-U-S. I'm a principal at Kyle McManus Associates, but more importantly, I've worked for the city as a planning consultant, and I'm the author of the redevelopment plan before you see me.
And before you go any further, does everybody, I know there are some new members that have been out of sat on this sort of, do you have any, I'm going to tell you the law on what you're going to be looking at and what your function is this evening, okay? Title 48, colon 12, uppercase A, dash 7, adoption of redevelopment plan, says that in subsection E, prior to the adoption of a redevelopment plan, or revision or amendment thereto, the planning board shall transmit to the governing body within 45 days after referral, it's under our referral powers, a report containing its recommendation concerning the redevelopment plan. The report shall, which is mandatory, include an identification of any provisions in the proposed redevelopment plan, which are inconsistent with the master plan, and recommendations concerning these inconsistencies, and any other matters that the board deems appropriate. The city itself, depending upon how the vote goes, if there's a finding of consistency, simple majority of a quorum is sufficient for the council to act. If it's, if there's a finding of inconsistency, there's a whole other structure that the city council is following in order to adopt. You're making recommendations, it's under your referral powers, the city council may or may not follow, you say, and they may follow some of it, or they may follow all of it, or none. They're just different structures, but that's our task to review. Beth is going to give to us this evening, she'll explain it, and guide you through it, and then you need to make a finding. It's typically done in a resolution format, and then we go into the details, however detailed the report is.
This is initial, right? So I could, this income, this is initial?
No, this is, this is, the whole area of the city has been deemed an area, and you corrected.
No, I'm saying this is not an amendment, this is initial.
Yes, this is initial.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, so like what we did for them, and then more, I understand.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Just want to make sure everybody understands their task, and what our responsibilities.
And then the applicant will have to come back to us with a full site plan, like any other applicant would come in.
Yeah, once it's all, then, once it goes through the process, we'll see again. So while we're sworn in, Beth, why don't we swear in our staff, because there's, it's only square testimony, Beth, to give this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your names for the record, and make a motion.
Donna LaBord.
Jason Fisher.
Jason Fisher, Board Editor.
And this is more of a legislative-type hearing, as opposed to an application for development, so that it's still under oath, but it's not, it's usually not as contentious as it is in application.
And does this, does this include also public question and public comment?
Well, we, you don't, I don't believe you have to, but historically, the board has always allowed the public to ask some questions within reason, and to make public comments within the time we usually have, under the same guidance.
Okay.
So Beth, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just want to emphasize one thing that we heard, that we already heard, that I was going to emphasize in my introduction, which is that this is the first time the planning board is seeing this, and will be discussing the site, but it will not be the last. Presuming the redevelopment and the project proceeds, this application will come back before all of you as, for their site plan approval, just like any other application. You'll be tasked with reviewing the development application and approving it if it warrants it. But importantly, there's that additional opportunity for input for the board, as well as, of course, the public. So with that, let's first just talk a little bit about the site.
While we, I'm sorry for interrupting you. Let's get the resolution referring the matter to us from the council, marked as an exhibit, as well as the redevelopment plan itself, that packet. Let's have that all marked. There's a C warrant for City One, today's date, because that's the enabling resolution that gives us the authority to act on this this evening. Sorry for the interruption.
That's okay. So as you can see from the title of the redevelopment plan and the presentation, we're talking about two lots, it's lot, or rather, block 501, lots 1 and lot 2, shown on this aerial. Of course, the address is same as the project name, 1012 Asbury Avenue, and what that means is it takes up the entirety of frontage along Asbury Avenue between Comstock and Langford Streets. So as you can see from this aerial, it's about half of the block width and the entirety of the block length along Asbury Avenue. The site's occupied by some non-residential uses, which, as you can see from this photograph, include a lot of pavement, vehicle parking, with the businesses, including auto repair. And so one of the, one of the advantages, I have to say, that just speaks to me from this aerial photograph, is the improvement to the area that is going to occur from the, from the redevelopment of the site. Just, it's simple to see the cars parked all over the right of way, just as a simple example, and how that might be improved. But beyond the existing conditions, I also want to note that our property is a little over an acre, about 1.15 acres, and it's roughly about 100 by 500 feet in dimension. And it's also in the B district, your, the underlying zone district is the B business district. Now, before I jump into the redevelopment regulations, the actual zoning standards, if you will, for the property, I just want to talk a bit administratively about how the redevelopment process will occur. So the first thing that I think folks might notice about this redevelopment plan is it actually includes rendering. So you'll see the concept plan, as well as the facade renderings, which I'll talk about in a little bit, and the redevelopment plan actually says to a developer, build this. So this redevelopment plan has been really customized to fit this particular project, and that's particularly important for these general provisions, because as you'll, on the first item, it notes that only the designated redeveloper may file site plan application. The request for a site plan shall only include the entire redevelopment area. And those two provisions are important, because it means that a different developer that might not be familiar with the project can't simply pick up the property and make a site plan application. In order to make a site plan application, a redeveloper must apply to this city, they must be the designated redeveloper for the property, and then they have to utilize the entire property. And those two provisions are intended to, to grant additional control to the city, and to also be another way to ensure that the project shown in this redevelopment plan will actually be developed, take some interpretation out of, out of the plan. In addition, other important provisions is that this redevelopment plan does not anticipate any acquisition of property, and also that, to the extent that a redeveloper might seek D variances, I'm thinking about a D variance for perhaps a use, or perhaps building height, those are not variances that can be granted through this redevelopment plan. If the redeveloper determines that they need height variance, such that it's a D variance, so more than the 10%, they would actually need to go back to city council and get an amendment for the redevelopment plan. So again, these are just some additional provisions to ensure enhanced control over the redevelopment of the site.
If I may, this is privately owned property?
Yes, privately owned property.
So somebody owns it already?
Yes.
Reportedly, you know, I assume the developer, it's a developer, right?
Yes. Yeah, I don't, to be fair, I don't know if it's a contract, if they have it under contract, or if they've taken full ownership, but nonetheless, they have control over the property, and then their intention is to redevelopment, redevelop it consistent with what we see here.
And so, this is like we're putting a special plan, if I understand correctly, this is redevelopment plan, right?
Yes.
That's going to have its own zoning, its own controls, and stuff like that, right?
Yes, yeah, this is a site-specific redevelopment plan.
Why do we do that, instead of just, doesn't that just say our zoning is not enough then? Why do we do this?
I think it's two things. So you can, I don't know that it's a reflection on your existing zoning.
Just speak up a little bit, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know that it's a reflection on your existing zoning. I don't recommend the redevelopment plan, because I think the B district is somehow inadequate for, for any development scenario. I recommend the redevelopment plan, because this site has a potential to provide a substantial amount of affordable housing, and probably the most important requirement in this redevelopment plan is a set aside of 40%. And so that requires enhanced support from municipality, and it requires enhanced flexibility in order to achieve a project, which is basically not viable without support and outside funding. And so the redevelopment plan is intended to help specifically usher this project with the 40% requirement, which you'll see listed elsewhere in there, to ensure that it can be developed.
So could you expand on a little more? So what, is the city, in other words, I understand 40% affordable housing, you know, it's hard to make profit there, right?
Yeah.
So is there special financing that's available, and then it will be done in conjunction with the city, and does that have to be redevelopment plan to do that?
It doesn't need to be a redevelopment plan, but it gives, but the redevelopment plan is a great idea, because it gives the city assurance that the project that it wants to support, including the, including the elevations, will actually be developed, as opposed to just simply allowing for a project that might look like this to proceed. So, so that's part of it. The other part of your question was outside funding, yes. Outside funding will be necessary in order to achieve this project. They'll be seeking low-income housing tax credits as part of the mixed income cycle that is anticipated to have a deadline for late August this year. And so that developer has been in communication, coordination with me, to, to make sure that this project would be eligible for that funding cycle, including eligible to receive site plan approval, which is part of the reason why we have the redevelopment plan before you this evening.
And my last question, I'll let you go, and apologize for that.
No, no need.
Should I assume this, this contract may be, if they haven't closed this development, they're, they're going to do, they're going to do this, they're okay with this redevelopment?
Yes, yes. Unlike a lot of other zoning provisions that might be put in place, I would say this redevelopment plan was done with much more coordination between the city and the developer than you might see for a, a more typical or conventional project, that might be even just a regular 20% set aside, or a regular 15% set aside. But where we're doing a 50, excuse me, a 40% set aside, and that requires support from the city, the coordination has been enhanced.
I said the last question, I have a half long. What is the emphasis for this? Is this the developer coming to the city, or the city?
The developer came to the city with the idea for a 40% set aside project, and the city provided some support, and that's what led us to here today.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If I may, hi, Beth. So I just want to ask another related question, and if this is outside the scope of, you know, your particular relationship is. I do agree with you that, in this case, the redevelopment area plan is highly necessitated by the 40% set aside, which I'm going to go right on record, fantastic. But I guess the question becomes, like, how aware should this board be about the continual use of redevelopment planning in a kind of all-over-the-place fashion? And so I do agree, this is a really great use of that redevelopment power, and, you know, at what point do we start to say, if we're having to use this redevelopment authority for the normal 15s and 20s and the whatever, how do we, like, isn't that, might that not point to a inadequacy or a deficiency in the underlying zoning to induce the development that we are desiring to see? And so my, this is a long-winded way of saying, like, at what point do we start to wonder about what the, the, what is a reasonable use of that power, and then when it becomes, or when our zoning needs to catch up? Because I think Dan's making a valid, valid point, which is, our zoning should hopefully be at a level where we're seeing the development that we want to get, and when you have to use that redevelopment power over and over again, it seems like we would want to argue. Where do you think that divide line is?
So standards aside, when is the process, redevelopment process being overused, essentially?
Yeah, like, you know, or, or would you at least say that this board should be aware that, like, we should pay attention to how the, you know, in this case, I think the 40% is a really great reason to say this is going to require more coordination, a redevelopment plan that has highly specific needs, but when it's being, if, if, I'm not saying it is, but like, how do we know when the zoning isn't?
I understand your question, and I, and I agree. I think, regardless of what my answer is going to be, which I'll, I'll give in just a second, I think that this is a really special circumstance, because we have that 40%, but the broader question, I think it is something that the planning board should be aware of. It's a power that, that sits with the governing body, of course, as it's a legislative duty to, to ultimately designate any areas and to adopt the redevelopment plans, but I see generally, not Asbury specific, but generally, the adoption of multiple redevelopment plans. It does start to reflect on concerns about the underlying zoning, because the zoning doesn't provide for the desirable of what the redevelopment plan is providing for, but it's really a balance that needs to be achieved, because redevelopment planning gives significant benefits, potentially to both parties, but including to the, to the municipality, and this, this redevelopment plan is, I would say, an extreme example of that, where we're literally, assuming the redevelopment plan gets adopted, we're basically saying, build this, only build this, that's the only option. And so where there's a benefit that the municipality wants to receive that can't be received through zoning, I think redevelopment makes a huge amount of sense, but it's, but there's that tension between the conventional zoning.
I think that's most relevant, but there's an acknowledgement of that tension, that, like, when the redevelopment authority is being used, it's such a small place, right? We're only a mile square, and if we're just, if the zoning isn't performing to get what's needed, in a lot of cases, we should also be, this board should be aware of the rate at which it's used, and the reasons in which it's being used.
In an overly simplistic and an extreme example, if municipality were adopting redevelopment, if you have a, a three-story district, and they're constantly adopting redevelopment plans to go to six stories on this block, and that block, and this block, and that block, it suggests that maybe the entire zone should be six stories, if it's appropriate in all of these locations. So that's the type of analysis that I think the planning board should keep in mind, is if you're, if you're through the redevelopment planning, determining that something very different is appropriate for an area, then it seems to me, maybe it should be a recommendation to change the zoning to accommodate that.
And so, this is, the conclusion is, like, the next time we revise the zoning, we should clearly look at the history of redevelopment planning in the previous period, to sort of say, what are we doing to get these things to happen, and should we bake that in?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, how's it guaranteed that this project gets built then?
Not, I can't guarantee that it will be built. I can only guarantee that if this developer proceeds, this is the project that will be constructed. Abs, I mean, of course, I can't tell you that there's no way that the redevelopment plan could be adopted, but absent that, the only development for this site that's anticipated now is the project shown in this plan.
Right, so if it gets approved and everything, that's it, that's what you can do. And say it turns out that's not feasible, then what? It has to be amended or something like that?
Yeah, absolutely. If they, if, maybe before, during, or after site plan approval, they determine that the project fundamentally doesn't work in some way that would require a D variance, it will be incumbent upon the developer to go back and seek redevelopment plan amendment. They'll need to, in order to make the, under the scenario, to make the project viable. And the city will have to consider that, and consider whether or not that amended project still makes sense.
Before we leave this topic, why doesn't our, or how does, phrase this properly, we have ordinances and everything in place that covers this particular property. By adopting this plan, how, what ordinances are being superseded, and why can't those ordinances now achieve the same effect that you're attempting? Where are we deficient?
So I wouldn't cast it as deficient, but the differences include, I would say, the biggest example is just simply the B district. This allows for increased density, it allows for reduced set asides, and it requires, or rather permits, a revised parking, parking demand, parking ratio.
Well, we're quite a bit deficient in the parking, are we not? Even after we passed, passed this plan?
This.
You changed, you changed the ground rules, but we're still not providing sufficient parking, in my opinion.
Okay.
I'm not arguing with them, I'm just trying to point out, you know, and I'm very concerned about this project. I think it's a great project, but we're locking ourselves into something here that I think we could achieve the same thing with our present rules and regulations concerning the B zone.
I don't think this project could be constructed under your existing zoning.
Were you giving more density under the redevelopment plan?
Yes.
And what else, what other alleviations?
The setbacks have been adjusted. You have, for example, zero feet permitted along Asbury and Comstock and Langford as well.
So in other words, you can go right up to your property line, there's no setback to the building?
That's correct. There's some shown in the concept plan, but, but the regulations and the substantial portion of the front is, is at a zero-foot setback.
What happens to the parking?
The parking is underbuilding, so it's a first-floor structured parking that has access from Comstock and Langford Streets.
You're saying how we make it different than?
Oh, I'm sorry. It, it requires just one parking space per housing unit, and no parking for the non-residential.
And what is the regular, 1.5?
Yeah, I believe it's 1.5, and then I think there's also parking required for your non-residential uses. And so that's been waived through this redevelopment plan.
I had a question about that. The parking, is it requiring one space per unit? Does that include the affordable units?
Yes, yes, it's every unit on the property.
Right, so under our current ordinance, market rate would be at a higher ratio, and affordable units are one per. This development is also twice the amount of affordable housing set aside, as a minimum, compared to other B-zone development. So what benefit the city gets, obviously, is a greater number of affordable units that are going to have a nice mix, they're going to have much greater numbers of very low-income affordable units compared to what we're seeing in other developments. Remember, the Springwood redevelopment plan only has a 20% set aside for redevelopment, but it has a very similar density ratio, has very similar purpose coverage standard, and again, the parking ratio is one per affordable unit, and then one and a half per non-resident unit. So, so it's not too far off from that scenario. Madam Stig, I thought in some other situations, that there was zero parking spots required for affordable units. Is that, nope, your face is telling.
No, I think there are some redevelopment plans that, like, the CBD, for example, was amended to not require parking for affordable housing units.
And what's the charges of affordability of the area?
So there's 40% set aside, and within that 40%, 13% of the affordable units must be reserved for households at very low income, which is 30% or less than median income. The next is 37% must be reserved for low income, which is between 30% and 50% of median income, and then the remaining 50% of those affordable units are moderate income, which is between 50 and 80% of median income.
And the median income is what, does this track the area?
No, it's.
Does it have Asbury Park, does it tell me?
No, it's actually a tri-county area.
Tri-county area.
Yeah.
Is that the standard, AMI?
It's.
That's the AMI?
It's the area, it's a median income produced by, ultimately by affordable housing professionals, but yes, it's an AMI based upon the three-county region generally. There are some slight differences in what you see HUD calculating, but it's, it's within the ballpark.
Who's the source of that?
Affordable housing professionals of New Jersey, since the Council on Affordable Housing here in New Jersey has ceased to function.
I'd just like to address the comment that Donna made about Springwood Avenue being comparable. We're doubling the height of, this unit doubles the height as compared to Springwood Avenue, and it also doubles the density.
No, it doesn't.
I.
Just like we.
I differ with you.
Remember last year, remember last year, we had two, well, year before and last year, we had two applications that were going. we had two applications that were governed by the Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan. The one is over at the corner of Memorial and Springwood, backing up to the railroad tracks, right? That's a four-story. And then the one on the west side of Memorial, Cookland, Bangs, and Madison, that one's a five-story with a ground floor, and it's 125 dwelling units with a 20% affordable housing set aside.
But they were granted variances.
Not for height, not for density. They were part of this plan board. They couldn't have.
Say it again.
They couldn't have had height or density variances. They were, they were before you guys.
Yes, and we gave, we granted a variance.
Not for height or density.
We had no jurisdiction to grant density.
You had design exceptions, you had some-
Or excessive height variances.
Right, and had to coordinate with county on some of the right-of-way improvements, but those projects did not require variances for height, floor area ratio, or density. That would go to the zoning board. Well, it would have been needed to plan a minute because it's land redevelopment variances. Again, so that redevelopment plan covers multiple blocks. It's not a very site-specific plan. This is a site-specific plan, and that's because the B District, you know, there's only so many sites that are sort of problematic or to develop or redevelop, and this site, again, Ms. McManus hasn't had a chance to give you the full depth and breadth of her presentation yet, but remember, this was a gas station site. For someone who may not remember, but many, many of us remember, or Comstock and Asbury, it was a gas station. So, and then the automobile uses, so there's been, you know, cleanup, there's remediation, there's groundwater contamination associated with the property. That's why it meets some of the other criteria in addition to just the general city rehabilitation designation. So, it's hard for a developer to come in, redevelop a site like this, and make it pencil out under the basic zoning criteria.
So this is a brownfield site, then? They could apply the brownfield credits?
No. I don't believe so.
Well, if you have 40%, I mean, usually there's a minimum between-
Sorry, remediation has the-
I don't have that, I don't know if they have any plans to apply for contamination or brownfields funding. That's, that's funding I've not heard them speak to.
But there are, there are environmental issues.
I would make that assumption, but if, but if not shared a phase one. Certainly, as part of any residential development on the site, they're going to be obligated to clean it up to residential standards, just to ensure safety.
There's already remediation under 20, so that's already handled. They've been cleaning the groundwater and water.
They could probably still apply the brownfield credits, especially with 40% affordable.
They may well do so. I'll say that there's nothing in this plan that would prevent them.
No, that's more money for them.
And then, again, the other benefit of the redevelopment plan is the tax abatement provision under redevelopment designation, so that will also help under its, you know, leveraging on-site funds to support that really heavy lift of 40% of the greater affordable housing set aside. I'm sorry?
How long is that available?
It'll be-
So, they wouldn't get it for regular zoning, doing it under the regular zoning, but because it's a redevelopment plan, they're going to get, they're going to get the long-term tax abatement?
I would say, it's not, the redevelopment plan certainly enables them to apply for it, it enables the city to grant it, but they're going to be seeking the long-term tax abatement because it is essentially required for their funding stream. Low-income housing tax credits, while it doesn't strictly require a tax abatement, it's a very competitive program. You get points for doing the tax abatement, so essentially, if you don't receive a pilot, you don't get the points, therefore, you're very unlikely to get funded. So it's not literally required, but it is required if you want to have a competitive funding application.
And how long is the pilot?
30 years.
And is that like some of the early pilots that we had, so?
The golden pilots.
Excuse me?
It's like the early and the present.
Okay, so is that where, like, no school taxes are paid with these pilot programs?
Conventional pilots don't provide school taxes, but that's actually a municipal decision.
Excuse me?
Conventionally, pilots do not provide school funding, but that's a municipal decision, and those, those items have not been discussed by the council.
That's a problem. We keep on, you know, we keep on giving away pilots, you know, I know we get our share, but the rest of us that don't have pilots keep on paying high school taxes.
And am I correct that the redevelopment, I mean, it also allows us to have some sustainability requirements in a redevelopment plan that we couldn't have elsewhere?
Yeah, so one of the, so there are a couple advantages to redevelopment. One of them, one of them is the ability to require some sustainability requirements. One of the items you'll see is it references Energy Star requirements, both for the building as well as for simple items like appliances are set forth in here.
Just one quick question. How do we, I know it's written, and I don't remember how that's monitored after we go through all site, if it all went forward. I mean, it says successful participation and the Energy Star multifamily, they just have to verify, I mean, who verifies?
That's actually something Donna and I started to talk about today. I think that that is, one, I think that's something that we can kick to the site plan application for the board to consider as a condition of approval, but my recommendation, the item that came to me off the top of my head was perhaps a certification that the developer would provide prior to a certificate of occupancy that would certify that, yes, they have participated in that program, and there are going to be funding documents that they can submit to provide support for that statement.
And would that decision be made, what, when would that, the answer to how that's done be decided? Meaning, like, whether it be the process you just described or something else? When is that determined?
I think that would be determined at the time of site plan. As you guys are considering the application, you'll be putting together presumably conditions of approval. One of those conditions will be outstanding compliance items, including sustainability requirements, and at that point, there could be a discussion amongst the board and the developer about how that item would be complied with, such as, but not limited to, a certification at the time or prior to certificate of occupancy that states the following: sustainability items have been incorporated into the building, here's my documentation to prove it, because that will be consistent with their funding application.
Again, this is going to have a redevelopment agreement with the city. There are a number of milestones that are going to have to be achieved in order to, you know, meet certain requirements for, you know, council approval as the redeveloper, and I think they're really going to be the gatekeeper on what's going to satisfy the sustainability requirement. I think from a site plan perspective, if we get the developer to choose certain, you know, let's say, simple, but, you know, very straightforward mechanisms or methodologies, yeah, we're going to have green roof, or yeah, we're going to do some kind of stormwater management system, that should be like the base element requirement. Anything beyond that, like this, the, can't think of it, the Energy Star for multifamily?
Right.
You know, instead of successful participation, as long as they're certified to participate, they're going to, you know, because that's a really huge checklist. It's like when you do a lead gold building. There's a big checklist, and if you can't achieve the, you know, at site plan stage, you have to have really thorough building plans.
And that's, that's kind of where I'm trying to get to, is that if it's-
Yeah, so we're trying to, we're trying to find where's the mechanism for, you know, as far as satisfying the planning board's concerns, satisfying the governing body's concerns in order to get maybe the pilot, right? And then, once we actually get to performance, what's the mechanism of capturing that control?
Okay, then you're in the last piece on that, because it is HFMA funding, so they, I mean, they have to do, they have to achieve that in order to get the fund, they have to go through, so it would be tracked through the state program.
Right, but at site plan stage, they may not have the architecturals or fire.
Right, 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 right. Right, I misunderstood, I'm just, I'm trying to understand the municipal versus state.
So is that, yeah, that disconnect between site plan approval and, you know, maybe the final execution of the, you know, whether it's redevelopment agreement or the selection by, if they've awarded the loan, right?
Right, right. So, I mean, that's, I mean, that's a driving factor. I mean, I'm sure for them, or whatever, but I'm just, I just want to make sure that the municipality is, that we have the municipality, not the planning board, but overall, has the language in, in a way that has that double layer between, like, not just HFMA, but what is the municipality requiring, and that it doesn't give the opportunity to say, "Well, we're, you know, looking at the guidelines and that, therefore, we looked at the guidelines, we can't do X, Y, and Z, so, but we achieved it because we looked at it." I don't want to get in that position because redevelopment plan is one, you know, one of the few times that we can actually say, "This is what we need to make this happen." I think the project's amazing, I just want to make sure, I feel like this is the time that we can make sure that, start to make sure that the language is accurate.
Does sewer capacity get considered in any of this? Because now we're getting units where the road, I mean, is there an analysis, you know, because I know it's different than the, you know, the waterfront redevelopment area, right, that had to be infrastructure redevelopment, this is past that, so.
They'll have to apply for sewer, as well as water capacity and permits, just like any other application in this area. They're working with their engineers to work, to address the infrastructure, and that includes not only sewer and water, but also road infrastructure. So they'll simply have to go through the same process as any other developer.
Does that mean just their hookup, or does that mean what one said in Asbury Avenue?
Just their hookup. They're not going to be obligated to, I have no sense that they're going to, that they're going to need to repair sewer lines or water lines in the area. If that's the case, that will be determined as they engineer their plans, and they'll have to address that with the planning board or with the council.
But do we consider sewer capacity at all?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
The line down, the line down Asbury Avenue, how many units are going to be?
It's, it's planned for 101, but up to 115. There's a little bit of wiggle room in there.
So, like, does anybody know, like, you know, the sewer system?
Yes, the sewer plant has tons of capacity. Several years ago, when I started, tried to take the sewer plant offline, switch it to Ocean Township, they did a study of the entire city for 100% build-out of every lot, and this was included, and we have enough capacity for 100% build-out of the city.
Thank you.
So, folks, we jumped ahead to some of the regulations, which is fine, but I'm just going to back up real fast and then jump ahead to this slide. So, wrong way. So, as I said, one of the, one of the principal things this redevelopment plan does is it, if I could just paraphrase, it basically says, "Build this." This is the building that the redevelopment plan requires to be constructed. So much that it requires substantial consistency with what you see here, and then we have additional standards in place that complement this facade or this building elevation, as well as the concept plan shown on the previous slide that you can also find in the back of the redevelopment plan. But it-
So they have to build that articulation?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I will say, the exceptions to that are the murals. They're going to work with the city's arts council to determine the appropriate mural. These are just examples. The planting locations are accurate, but the plantings themselves will be subject to a landscape plan, and some of the details are going to be subject to their architecture and engineering plans, but from a, but on a conceptual basis, this is the project that shall be constructed, minus those exceptions I just listed. In addition to, to those images in the redevelopment plan, like I said, we also have some complementary standards. First and foremost, as folks would probably expect to see, we have permitted uses. What this basically means is that the first floor facing Asbury Avenue will be non-residential use. We're looking, if you see on the concept plan, you see labels referred to, and you'll see it in the redevelopment plan, community facility space, but what that really is, is a fancy term for, for non-residential space. Retail, art studios, galleries, et cetera. Additionally, any use permitted in the B District, supportive or accessory residential uses, like the lobby that you see listed facing Asbury Avenue, and then, of course, the parking at the rear on the first floor. Upper stories are, of course, the multifamily units and then their, their amenity and accessory spaces. In addition to those permitted uses, we have several bulk and design standards, which I've just put a handful of those that I think are, are most noteworthy on this slide. And so, as I said before, maximum density of up to 115 units. The plan that you see right there depicts 101, I believe, or capacity for 101. We also have that minimum affordable housing set aside of 40%, which is very important. Maximum building height of four stories or 55 feet, excluding penthouse level, very similar language to what we see for your existing height standards for this area. We have our front yard setbacks of, and side yard of zero feet. The rear yard setback, which I think is one of the most sensitive setbacks, in that this is the area that abuts the residences to the rear, that has an eight-foot setback, and as you can see on the concept plan, that area is actually undeveloped and can be, can be landscaped, assuming the board sees fit for that. We have a maximum previous coverage standard of 95%. We also have a requirement that the building face Asbury Avenue, I think, obviously, but just in case. And then we have that parking standard I've referenced of one space per housing unit, and then the sustainability standards that we also discussed. The other item in here are additional architectural standards, many of which are consistent with your existing B District, and then a couple of others that are intended to better reflect this project as well.
So the ground floor will be all non-residential, because you said facing Asbury Avenue?
Well, the, if we take a look at this slide, so the ground floor, this is the ground floor plan, and all of the spaces shown in that orange-ish color, that's the non-residential space. The area in purple and white, that's the amenity lobby space associated with the residential development, and then the area behind that is certainly the parking. So, the, the visible first-floor frontage from Asbury Avenue will be commercial.
And so that parking, when the, was that Langford?
Yeah, it has access to both Langford as well as Comstock.
So it's building the whole doors?
Along those two side streets, yes. There'll be a wall with, with a parking garage entrance or access on either side.
I'm just going to ask, just to come up another-
Please.
...developments. So, we're calling Asbury Avenue the front, Comstock and Langford are the sides, so that rear yard setback is only in the back, yeah?
For the residences, yes.
Well, we're talking about the parking. Is that planned for two, two-way access to either street?
Yes, it is, but I do see the, any detail of that access to be subject to your site plan review, but yes, the short answer.
If that aisle width was reduced and the building setback from Asbury Avenue, the amount of the reduction in the aisle space, would that not give you a little better frontage on Asbury Avenue as far as possible plantings, tree?
It would, but the, I mean, that is, yes, if the aisle width or maybe the parking space depths were reduced, yes, that would give additional space for, for setback along Asbury Avenue. Similarly, if the building were shifted for a smaller rear yard setback, that would give additional space. But the concerns I want to cite is that right now we have a parking aisle width of 22 feet shown on this, and parking space widths of eight, excuse me, lengths of 18 feet, and I think that's adequate, but as they start to go down a little bit more, I begin to get a little nervous about whether or not that's going to provide for safe and easy access to that parking garage.
It would eliminate encroachments of the awnings on Asbury Avenue and possibly provide for a pickup, drop-off space, actually off the street. So I think that's something to, to consider in this plan.
Okay.
And if you make the aisle, the drive one-way, and you cut the aisle width down, you're not losing anything in the way of safety.
Okay. I can pass that on.
So, what are those planters on Asbury Avenue?
The green areas?
No, the gray.
Do you mean right here?
Yeah, no, for that, those, what are those?
Right here? Those are lawn areas, planted, planted areas, yeah.
So, from the end of the planting area to the curb, what's the sidewalk?
Um, I'm, the sidewalk width or that whole frontage area? Like, the, the distance from the building to the, to the curb? You mean the distance from the building to the curb?
No, I mean, the distance from the planting area to the curb. I mean, you know, people going to be walking on the grass?
Oh, I gotcha. Well, there's going to be a sidewalk in front, so that'll be, it will be building, planting area, sidewalk, planted area, and then the curb cut, so folks, they, I guess they could walk along the grass, but they'll have a perfectly fine sidewalk to utilize.
How wide will the concrete be that they could walk on?
Along the sidewalk? That's going to be subject to Monmouth County. Asbury Avenue is a county road, so I would, I would like to presume a minimum of four feet, but I, but I must defer to their jurisdiction on this.
But these plans, can they count, can accommodate four feet?
Yes, yes.
All right, there's just a couple, just a couple of things I'd just like to bring up while we're in this area. I noticed that it looked like you had bumpouts? I noticed that it looked like you had bump outs?
Yes.
That would also have some plantings. Does that come into the 95% impervious? Does that count?
No.
Does that give you more percentage?
No, actually. So those bump, bump outs are within the county right-of-way, within the road right-of-way. So those green spaces in the bump outs, as well as these green spaces that hopefully you can see with my cursor, these areas are within the county right-of-way. And so these lands, while they will be impervious, as shown on this plan, they don't contribute towards 95%. This is additional green space, if you will. But I, I just want to be so clear that it's subject to the county and I.
All right, so we're, so we can't, so that's more site plan? That's not now? That's like, this is what we would like, but we're not sure if that, that green space is going to be there. And it's not counted in the 95% impervious?
Correct.
Today.
Correct.
Now, is the 95, within the 95% impervious, that eight-foot setback up to the houses?
Yes.
Is that, that's within it? So that, I would assume.
That's part of your 5%.
That's, that's our 5%.
Correct.
Okay, well, I knew it was somewhere.
Yeah, plus, yeah, and there's.
There it is.
It's certainly not impervious, it's certainly not pervious. But as you can see, I think that this plan gives a good sense as to some of the additional greenery that you'll see on the property. Because 95% is, I think, obviously very high. But one of the nice things about this project is we have the additional county right-of-way, which will provide some additional green space. We also have upper story greenery that's planned as well. So it doesn't address the stormwater management concerns that typically go hand in hand with impervious cover. But it is some aesthetics to help address the impervious cover concern.
All right, so I just want to go on the record to say that 95% impervious is, is an issue for me. That I would like to bring that up as part of the approval. If it does go approved, that we try to get that to somewhere closer to 90, if we can, in some ways. It makes me feel better that the county has, is giving us some. But now that you're saying that they may not, doesn't make me feel so good. So I understand you're being cautious.
Yeah.
And the bump outs would help also to give us some more pervious coverage. So that would be good.
What's the normal rear, rear yard on the presuming setback?
I was going to say 10. Yeah, thank you, Donna. Yeah.
Isn't it 100% impervious now?
95. Well, today, it's probably 100%.
Right, so I mean, 95 isn't great, but it's better than 100.
It's not great, but we'd like to get as close as we can to something better.
Right now, it's 100%.
Yeah.
Right.
Fair.
And I also want to highlight that the redevelopment plan doesn't give any relief to your stormwater management ordinance.
And is there, do we have as a city, whenever it goes to the county, to hope that they give us that, allow us to have that green space? Just do it like, I mean, I don't know how that works. So can we make recommendations, like as a city?
Which is what we've done.
Okay.
An H4 almost across the street, partner engineering.
Yes. Okay, good. Because we need, we want as much of that as possible.
And so the planning board, I'm sorry, you guys will have a bite of the apple first, you know? Because the county is going to be your outside agency appro, or their outside agency approval. So you guys will set the tone for what's, what you think is appropriate here. And that's what they'll take to the county.
Okay.
This is going to be a major development, right, for stormwater management, because it's over an acre. So this is going to be a major development for stormwater management. So the stormwater management requirements for this project are going to be significant. We typically don't see those here. The projects are usually smaller. So it's going to be significant.
Good.
As far as the county goes, now obviously approve this or talk about this after we talk about this in the city council. What they agree to in the right-of-way, as far as bump outs, far as the, are they able to change what they want after they agree with the first time? So I'm going to say right now bump outs, well, ours are great. I had them planned for Asbury Avenue. I've been working on it for a while now. So now I'm like, so I just want to flesh out both ideas. So I don't want to say, yes, do bump outs, and then we, if you wanted bump outs, when something else could have worked out a little better.
I think that's something that we can accommodate. I'd like to talk to you a little bit more. It sounds like just a little bit of flexibility might need to be built into the right-of-way plan to accommodate the city's plans. But, but my vision for this is they'll come in for site plan approval. They'll depict a right-of-way that this board, yourself included, is comfortable with. And then that is the plan that they will take to the county. So any adjustment that needs to happen to the plan, you'll have an opportunity to do that at site plan approval. And if we know in advance, even better.
One other thing that, that I'm a little concerned about traffic flow, having to do with Langford and Comstock. They are, they are streets where there usually are, cars are parked on both sides and it's a narrow street. I would like to see if we can have a discussion with the director of transportation.
I recommend one-way travel in that garage.
Okay, one-way travel, but would that would, I was also concerned, should, should we consider one-way travel on Langford or Comstock, for that matter? But that's something that doesn't have to come within this approval, but it, that's something that's separate. Because remember, we're bringing in 100 extra cars into this area. So I get it that we're going into a garage, but still, you're hitting that street. Langford is not a big street. And 100 extra cars going in and out of there is going to be interesting.
Well, the other side of that is, there's that car facility where they have all their cars parked on the street.
Right.
Double parked. And so this will definitely be an improvement.
This will be an improvement. There's no doubt that there'll be an improvement, but as, as you know, that whenever we get into site plan approval, we also want to know how many parking spaces are outside today? How many are going to be tomorrow? Are you going to be net negative or net positive? In this case, you may end up being net positive.
Yeah.
Because of all the curb cuts that exist. And I think that we will have to take a look at Langford, because there is a loading zone or yellow, a yellow curb cuts there that we have to kind of like rethink. And if that's okay, if they're okay, fine, then they're okay. But I think that that's going to be something that the transportation, director of transportation has to kind of like take a look at with that. And then that's obviously not part of this, but it is, I'm concerned about flow.
And I don't think there's anything that we've talked about in terms of the traffic that conflicts with this redevelopment plan. It's all within your jurisdiction as part of site plan approval. Honestly, I'm going to give the developer a heads up and say essentially, hey, I've heard folks think that this should be one-way circulation. Let's just, let's just get that done now.
Let, let them know now that this is something that we're concerned about.
It would work, but I think it won't be better, is what I'm going to say.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Two would be fine. It would work. I think it won't be safer in and out on those narrow roadways.
James, let me ask you a question about that. If, and I don't know if this is true or not, but if people leave the building generally, the majority leave the building at one period of the day and then return to the building at a different period, then wouldn't one-way in and out cause like all that traffic to be on either street during either period?
For that, for that 10 minutes, sure.
I mean, if you had a hundred people.
Yeah, is this an hour really an hour or is it just that 20 minutes?
Yeah, like if you're talking about people leaving just this one garage, it's going to be 10 minutes till they're all gone.
Right.
And I, and I believe that both of them have, have lights. Both streets, I believe that they have lights. So there might be a backup there and, so, you know, that's for considerations.
And those streets are, those streets are two-way, right?
Yeah.
Both streets are two-way?
Yes.
So you're going to let them turn left or right as they come out, doesn't matter?
And evening commute times tend to have a broader range of return trips than morning leave times. So you tend to have a bigger peak in the morning and a slower slope in the afternoon, because people go out after work and make.
The loading zone from the building, if they have access to the garage, why wouldn't they just load in the garage? I think we're wasting that frontage on Asbury Avenue. That's just getting up being parked cars, first of all, because I can see it for my building now. I don't think it should be a loading zone, but is there a reason why you chose it to be a loading zone?
The loading zone was intended to provide multiple purposes. The first one is loading for the non-residential space, presuming any trucks are not going to be comfortable or may not be able to enter the parking garage. Loading for, for residents moving in and moving out. It's a convenient location that doesn't impact flow of traffic in any of the side streets or Asbury. And then also for passenger pickup and drop-off, presuming folks are engaging in ride sharing.
How long is that loading zone?
Unstated. That's part of what would need to be worked out at site planner with county.
Because if they're going to, if these trucks have large trucks coming in, neither can require a large loading zone or they're just not going to use loading zone in general anyway.
One of the things that I had, that is not addressed in the redevelopment plan, because I think it's more of a site plan issue, is to what extent the planning board might be comfortable with tractor trailers being used for loading. In many communities, folks will prohibit the use of tractor trailers for certain sites if the circulation is problematic in one of many ways. So I see that as a potential option for you guys here, if you have a concern about the size. Or if there's a decision from the planning board to exclude a loading area, I'm not in favor of presumably on-street parking. I'm not, I don't have an indication of, of pushback from the developer. It certainly has no impact on the feasibility of the project. It was, it was intended to be really a positive, I don't want to say an amenity, but something, something positive for the city to alleviate loading concerns along this block. But if those concerns are, are outweighed by, outweighed by the need for parking, I don't have any concern.
Yeah, I mean, if we didn't have one, if we didn't have one, somebody's moving in when the moving truck is double parked on Asbury Avenue?
Yeah, or one of the side streets. That's exactly it.
And that was the transportation and traffic engineers just cringing.
Yes.
But you know.
It happens.
It does, but you know, that, that does present potential safety issues for pedestrians, bicyclists when, when there's double parking, especially on something like Asbury Avenue, but even worse, it can happen on Langford and Comstock. So I, you know, I think it's important to get, you know, the city's official, you know, position on how we want to handle loading space for Asbury Avenue for a substantial amount of commercial potential floor space. So, you know, we know deliveries are being made with tractor trailers. So we just had 614 Coopman, Cisco brings their 53-foot trailer down Coopman Avenue and either double parks on Coopman Avenue or tries to wedge into as many on-street parking spaces as they can in front of, you know, the street, the businesses on that block to make their pittance of a delivery. We're not going to be able to say, no tractor trailers on Asbury Avenue. It's, you know, it's on our road, first of all. So I, I think it's a reasonable accommodation. Land development regulations do require for mixed-use developments, they have to provide a loading space, right? 14 by 25. So they don't appear to be able to accommodate one on-site.
Well, so that's my question really is like, could they get one?
Because we're not going to have, we're not going to have the height to hit it to the garage.
For a smaller truck, you mean?
Well, for a smaller truck, but we can't regulate who's, who's made the delivery.
True, that's my comment also, how large is the loading zone? And if you're trying to park a tractor trailer in the loading zone, you need a big loading zone, majority of that block. And when you do put this in, the tractor trailer isn't going to be bothering using it if it's a fit.
But maybe it's a 90% of FedEx, UPS.
So that's the everybody else inside, couldn't it? There's more.
So that's, again, that's the city policy. Before we get to site plan, hopefully we'll have that guide.
It sounds like, James, you and I talk about curb management.
I like that.
I bet you do.
Does it matter whether you have an Asbury or one of the side streets?
Well, again, it kind of depends on the hierarchy of Asbury.
You don't have a road zone either for deep, yeah.
And you have a site distance to the intersection.
I guess it's the county right-of-way, but I don't know if we can have or include this in this plan. Because there's a bus stop on Comstock and Asbury Avenue. Would we be able to include some kind of combination of bus shelter into this plan? And that bump out or upwards?
Yes, but I think it's got to be within the county right-of-way.
Yep, it is, in the county right-of-way.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Well, there's one there and there's one over here, two, they're on both blocks.
Oh, question. Was that Monmouth, please?
I noticed in the plan, it says that parking is not, not going to be converted principal use. Does that mean that they are allowed to charge parking in the garage?
No, I mean, I do think that's something that this, that the planning board will deal with at site plan, but those parking spaces are going to be required to serve their, their units. Does that answer your question?
Yes, only if they're not allowed to use it.
Like, as in public parking? No.
But they could charge tenants for it?
They can charge tenants, but I have to say that charging tenants for, charging affordable housing tenants for parking is not always, is not always a great idea. I think some folks assume that they'll charge the $500 a month for the unit, because that's what is the maximum rent permitted. And then they'll put the parking fee on top of it, just so the board knows that that is not permitted. If you think you're going to charge $500 for an affordable housing unit, plus $200 for parking, for a total of $700, that's not permitted. What you actually will need to do is charge $300 a month for the unit and then the $200 for parking.
But you may not charge others, like a transient?
Correct, yeah, it is not, public parking is not for fee parking.
All right, while, while we're, while we're on our favorite subject, parking, the reser, I'm, I'm concerned about, if you could just explain this a little further, about the Zip Cars, the Hertz On Demand. Can you tell, tell us what you, what the vision is here?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just simply car share. That was input that I received from Michelle Alonso. I believe those types of standards had been incorporated into some other development applications in the city, and she'd recommended those for this site. I was happy to incorporate that, and I think there's a nod to, to the planning board's jurisdiction on the topic, if you felt it was not necessary.
I, I don't understand what it means. Does it mean that, like, let's say a tenant, a tenant has a Zip Car and they can park there or?
Zip Car is a company.
Yeah, but it's, but the Zip Car is something you have to get from somebody.
Or share.
Yes.
Yeah.
But that would be like, that would be transient, because I assume, I mean, unless they're not going to charge Zip Car.
It could be parked in their garage.
To park.
Right, and it's, then it's available for different tenants.
It could be for the, it could be for the residents of the, of the building, if the developer and the planning board were so inclined. But this is something that was, I think that this is something that needs to be addressed at the time of site plan. You guys need to see the total number of units on the property, total parking demand on the property, determine if there's adequate extra spaces, if you will, in order to accommodate those Zip Car-type spaces. You can, I'm happy to talk about it. I'm just saying, you, it's not a requirement. I think it's something that the planning board has jurisdiction over to work out with the developer at the time of site plan.
But is that at site plan? Because I'm, what I'm concerned about is that if we say, okay, now we have four Zip Car slots or five, tell.
Especially how car share works. Those cars are parked on the street. You can use an app on your phone to unlock the car, get in, drive in.
Okay.
They're all GPS-enabled, just like the scooters would be, so they know where they are. Could you park it in your garage? Yes, you're not going to be able to use the car again. They're going to know, they're going to find it, they're going to bam.
Right, but, but what they're saying is that there are four spaces in that garage.
So they are going to be, car share, way we would work it is they could geolocate it to that location. So it would know if it's in that location or if it's in another location.
Oh, and they would have an access to the garage.
So only the people in that building can use it?
No, the car, the garage, I mean, I shouldn't, and everybody here going to the garage, right?
It depends on how they work it out.
Not everybody, yeah, you'll have to have the code to get into the garage.
That's, that's what I'm, I'm a little.
So I don't know about having car share spaces in the garage. I've never seen that before. It's not possible. It's just a little different. I've usually seen it on the street.
Yeah, I mean, they do that in Manhattan, but, but the company's paying for the, paying the garage.
I'm just, I'm just, while I, when I understand it, I don't know how that would work. To have someone drop a car off and then that car stays there for, somebody else wants it, they can't get into the garage to go get it, because they don't live in the building.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that garage doors would be blocked.
Plus, if it's, if it's outside, if it's outside people and there's compensation to the developer for it, you can't have.
Say that again?
You said you can't have a transient parking garage. You could only be for tenants. So if you have Zip Cars, like I could go there, unless I assume if the developer didn't charge Zip Car for having the spaces. But if he takes, if they take compensation from an outside party who's not a tenant for parking space, isn't that then a public parking garage?
Yeah, I think it would be. I think that that's just simply a, something that the site plan and the developer is going to have to work out with the planning board, quite honestly.
Well, that would be a variance.
Yeah, or there'd be, yeah, or there would be a variance or waiver. But the redevelopment plan gives some jurisdiction to the planning board on that issue, to the extent desired by the planning board.
And there seems to be, I'm sorry.
All I was going to say is, I know that where I lived in New York, across the street, they had Zip Cars in the garage. And they had an electronic keypad so that outsiders could get into the garage to access those Zip Cars. So that's a possibility.
It seems though, there's a lot of concern whether or not there's adequate parking. So giving over four spaces in this particular case may not be what we would see as the benefit, despite the potential benefit for residents who live in the location. But who uses a Zip Car that often?
But it might be a benefit to the tenants who live there.
Yes, it might be.
Because they have access to a car. Now they're not going to go out and buy another one that we have to worry about putting on the street.
I think we would have to understand the likely uptake rate within a particular building, which, you know, Zip Car's not cheap. I hate to break it to everybody. Getting to the grocery store or, I think that's a bad example, because everybody should use super supermarket. This is an advertisement. This is an advertisement.
City supermarket.
Yeah, yeah, super, city supermarket is absolutely true.
I was going to say, so you were going to talk to the developer about other concerns. Tell them that's a concern and tell them, if you want this project, knock it out. I mean, let's get rid of it.
Yeah, I just don't understand how it's going to work.
If the board is.
And everybody's on a short timeframe. I'm not saying we should rush or anything, but there is a short timeframe as far as them to apply for credits in August. So, I mean, we can't have six of these meetings, trying to figure this out when it's going to come back before us, as she said 20 times. Donna said, Jack said, for site plan, when we can make all those decisions then and change things. So.
And it sounds like on this particular item with the Zip Cars, et cetera, I would ask somebody to speak up, but I haven't heard any planning board members say, I think that's a really great idea.
I do like that idea.
Sorry, James.
Yeah.
So. Right, yes.
I think there should be more discussion on, so when they come for their discovery, we should say, we should say, how's this going to work? And then they can explain to us and we can say, no, that's not going to work for this, but it's going to work.
Or how would it work differently if that car was just on the street, on Asbury Avenue?
As long as it's, that we could, it's not guaranteed to be forced to be in there, I think that's good to include.
Okay.
That's, that's fine, because I don't think that it's a hard no, but it's, you know.
We need to, it needs to be justified.
We need to be, it needs to be justified, so I think that that's probably what would be one of the conditions.
Okay.
I have a parking-adjacent question, which is about bike storage.
Yep.
I know the plan says bike storage is required, but it's like, it's like a teeny-tiny room for 100 units. Is there any minimum number of bikes that need to be stored in the plan?
The bike, the plan does not have a minimum number. What you see on this plan is, in the bike storage shown right there, those are 10 bike racks. The developer has indicated to me that this area right here would provide space for an additional 10. So that would be a total of 20 for roughly 20%, depending on the total number of units on the property.
But is that space supposed to be for the handicapped?
Some of that is, yes. And then we also have a door in this area, but it allows for space along, this is the trash compactor room, but it would allow for bike racks adjacent to the trash compactor room, and that would give adequate walk space still.
Does regular zoning have a requirement or something?
No.
Not ours.
The Springwood redevelopment plan has a bike storage requirement. It's very high.
Yeah, I think it's two bikes per unit.
It's two per unit.
Wow.
Plus one per thousand square foot of commercial space.
Thank you.
So it's a big number.
And certain green building standards will provide a guidance on the rate of bike rack per unit, right? And so, like, LEED has one and also, well, LEED Energy and LEED both have two different ones. So maybe we could suggest, like, at least benchmarking it to the standard to know how many racks, because I think, I would tend to think alternate transportation is much more likely to be a bicycle than it is to be a Zip Car.
Agreed, totally agree.
So that's my opinion.
Or even using, like, let's say if there is that one parking, instead of the four parking spaces, maybe one of those should be for bike racks, something, something to increase that number. So I think that that's a good thing for us to also put in there, for Eric's suggestion, is to increase the amount of storage for bicycles, because I think that that's really important.
Yeah, and maybe, at least, I don't want to say require a guidance, but at least have them say, like, according to the LEED standard, this is how many bikes would be provided, and this is how many we are providing. So that we get some scale of the approach.
Okay, I can strengthen the bike parking requirements, and I think that's a good idea. In addition to that, I also just want to note that they'll also be providing some street furniture, which I would anticipate will include bike racks, but that would not contribute towards satisfaction of the requirement.
Right, and I would actually, I would not allow residential bike parking on the public bike racks.
Agreed, that's intended for visitors to the site.
Yeah, so like, I would actually, within the redevelopment, you would say, these are for people who, because you want people to come to these retail environments with their bikes.
And have available bike parking, yes.
So, sorry, are parking-adjacent parking questions done?
Anybody else?
What else, folks?
Are we going for other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, in the architectural design standards, you call out awnings. Now, when I think of awnings, I typically think fabric things. Can we also leave something in there that says, like, overhangs and canopies? Because, like, something that just sticks out flat straight from the facade could be a solution and isn't an awning. So I don't want to, like, ham us into that one. The awnings are my least favorite part of this project. I, like, something, a more architectural approach.
Okay.
Or the allowance of a more architectural approach.
Okay.
If awnings are the thing, fine, but like, canopies or something like that. And also that they may be open, like, they don't have to be solid. Like, if it's flat, it could be open or like a screen just to provide some shading or something like that.
I think that's fair.
I have a couple of other questions. For signage, I feel like most of our redevelopment plans say something about how signs for the non-residential spaces need to be cohesive within the building. I know in here it says, there's some things about signage, but I was just actually curious what Donna thought. Do we need to strengthen that at all? Anything about signs being cohesive?
Well, it does say, first of all, you have to comply with redevelopment regulations.
Okay, that was good.
And that'll be the trigger for we need a signing plan, because it's multiple facilities within a building. So they would have to comply with the signing plan requirements, and that's the consistent lettering and amendment.
Thank you.
And it's going to be a design exception?
Yes, yeah. One of the amendments to the redevelopment plan that I do want to make, that will provide clarity, is I want to label each section as to whether or not they're variances or they're exceptions, so there's no question when site plan occurs. So your permitted uses, your bulk standards will all be variances. Items like signage, streetscaping, architectural sustainability will be exceptions.
By the way, to the board, New York City's requirement for multifamily buildings is one per, or two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any other questions that they would like to?
Yeah, I've got a couple more. The current zoning permits three stories, maximum of 30 feet. You're changing this to four stories, 55 feet. What is the minimum height that you can get away with for four stories?
Okay, so that's incorrect.
I beg your pardon. It's on page 53 of the master plan, where it gives that, the B1, I'm sorry, the B-zone, it is, says, three stories, 30 feet.
That's the recommendation in the master plan. The zoning ordinance was amended, and it permits four stories and 50 feet in the B district.
I'm sorry.
It permits four stories and 50 feet in the B district. That's the actual zoning requirement.
And we're, now we're bumping it up to 55 feet plus 12 foot of a penthouse.
The penthouses, one in the same way as the regular, or is it?
I understand that.
Okay, they're not allowed to take up a lot of the roof area, otherwise they count as a store. So they're restricted.
What I'm asking is, we have, we go to a certain height. Now, 55 feet is, four stories, is twice of what everybody on that block has. No building is above two stories on that block.
We got partners.
Well, not that block, because there's no development on that block except for on the reverse side, the single-family zone. Single-family.
What I'm saying is, can we?
Across Asbury Avenue, there are buildings that are higher than that.
No, they're all two-story on the.
The one we approved with the engineering firm is.
That's on the next block.
Maybe you should look, you should look.
What I'm asking is, can't we cut down the height? Can't we cut it down? We have a maximum of 67 feet. Can we cut that down?
I am sorry to say, the height really can't be reduced without losing units, and specifically without losing the three-bedroom units. Because one of the things that, one of the things that really dictates the need for the penthouse are the requirement for 40% of these units to meet the affordable housing bedroom distribution requirements, which means that 80% of the units need to be two and three bedrooms of those, of that 40%. And so it just dictates larger unit sizes. And so because of those larger unit sizes, it just expands the building footprint, it expands the building height in order to accommodate those 100 or so units on the property.
So some of the penthouses can be the affordable units?
It may be. The specific unit locations have not yet been decided, but just the simple need for three-bedroom units, which I feel like is pretty unusual here in Asbury Park, dictates those larger unit sizes and the larger building size.
And I assume, like, the distribution has to be.
Yeah, so for the affordable units, it's not, yeah.
And if I may, I think, Jim, when you think about it, too, on the ground floor, you need 15 feet clear to accommodate reasonable, reasonable retail footprints. Like, a 10-foot height for retail is not great. You have no space for utilities, no space for air ducts. So your first floor has to be about, you could get away with 12, but 15 is a better planning module. And then for each floor above that, you need 10 feet to accommodate an eight-and-a-half-foot ceiling height on the interior. So it just adds up. It's 15 plus four, then you're at 55, 40 or 15.
What's the possibility of going down a few feet? I don't know what the water table is in that area, but is it possible?
Oh, to drop the building down? I haven't explored that question with the developer. It may be feasible, but my response is that the concern that it raises is the cost of the project, and given the fact that they're already doing the 40% affordable and will be seeking outside sources of funds. One of the nice things about this project, for a 40% affordable housing project, is in most places that would come with a very hefty ask from the developer to the municipality on the order of multiple millions of dollars, and that's not the case here. And so it's very nice to see a project that is intended to be self-sustainable from a funding perspective, you know, outside municipal sources.
You won't want to get down, but that would raise ADA issues, too.
Yeah, you would spend the entire frontage of the building ramping down to get into units.
Right, you don't really pick up any usable floor area by doing that.
You might end up with the same amount, but.
You could put a few residential units in the ground floor, like sunk the entire parking level. But, yeah, it's, it's.
Well, it would be, yeah, because then you also have some more structured parking.
Yeah.
It's structured because now you'd have to ventilate the parking if it's completely overrated.
And for the benefit of only a couple of feet.
Yeah.
Who's the developer on this?
It's a partnership between L&amp;M Development Partners and Sackman. L&amp;M Development Partners and Sackman Enterprises.
Is that L&amp;M, the affordable housing, the developer from New York?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah, they do nice projects. All right, anybody else have any other questions?
Hopefully, call it a week. You're supposed to go.
Anybody else have any other questions, planning board members? Do our professionals have any other questions?
I would just offer that we have a few comments that we've recommended for, you know, tightening up some of the language. We talked about the variances and exceptions areas. So I think you've heard our comments throughout this.
Does the, does the public have any questions that they would like to, open it up to the public? Any questions that they would like to bring to Ms. McMath's? I think that that's the comments we might have to motion. No? No? All right, can we open it up for comments to the public? Please open up, kind of get a motion to open up for public comments.
So, second.
Okay, anyone from the public that would like to?
All in favor.
All in favor, us, yes. No problem. Anybody from the public that would like to make any comments?
Motion to close.
Okay. All right, now that we've heard all the comments, do we now, do we do the normal?
Well, here's what we do.
All right, here's what we do. You tell us what we do, because we have, we have things to say.
First and foremost, in the statute, it talks about, do you have any inconsistencies with the master plan as presented? If you do, point to now. And the other matters that the board deems appropriate, this is a list that I have, which would require a vote from the board, because some people may have it, but not everybody may agree. One, there's a potential to, a recommendation for the council to look at a reduction in the impervious coverage, lock coverage to 90% from 95. Second, possibly reduce the interior drive aisle width and make it one-way traffic, which would then possibly allow for the increase in the front yard setback on Asbury Avenue. Review.
I just want to make a comment. You're talking about the 22-foot aisle width in the parking area?
Yeah, that's what the board said.
So there's one consideration is to make it one-way and make the aisle narrower. But what's driving the width of the aisle is the 90-degree parking.
Yeah, so you need it no matter what. So one-way or no-one-way, you need that.
If you have 90-degree parking, you need that 22. I know Asbury ordinance is less than 22, informed by ordinance. Typically, it's 24. Could be done in 22, but it's tightly defined and all that.
Can we, can, would it be possible, or would it make sense for us to state that we would like, the traffic flow will be reviewed under the, when it comes to site plan?
What we might do is, all in here.
Please.
If you have eight feet in the back and the parking spaces are 18 feet deep, make them 16 feet deeper and allow a car to overhang two feet onto the grass and you can get two feet down.
I have a solid wall at the rear, unfortunately, yeah.
Right there, got you.
Yeah. While we're making.
It would do that, too. Scratch the question.
So should we put something in, into the resolution to regarding traffic flow?
Why don't I, why don't I put something in there that one-way traffic circulation through the parking garage should be considered?
A consideration?
Yeah, and then, well, it doesn't address the setback issue. It might address the circulation issues that the board raised.
Is there a concern of circulation?
Yeah, so I am concerned with the two-way exit on both sides. So I'd rather it be one-way through. That was never meant as a setback change, just.
I got it, so it would be recommendation for the council to look at the potential for one-way traffic.
Right, traffic flow through the building and in and out.
And I'm sorry, but if we're making comments on the findings from the board, let me just throw one item out. There was a recommendation to consider a reduced impervious cover of 90%. Right now it's at 95%. I think that there's tolerance in the project to go down from 95% to 92%, 93%. But I have concerns about reducing it down to 90%. So if the board's comfortable with that, I could make a change for the revised version that goes back to council that brings the impervious cover from 92% down to 92.5% to split the difference.
95 to 90.
Or, yeah, I'm sorry, 95 down to 92.5.
Right, it's something that, my concern is more so that we work as hard as we can in order to get more impervious coverage, as opposed to, do I need it to be 90 or is that, is that the number? I don't know what the number is. It's like, what can we do to get it from 95 to something?
So make it from 90, recommend coverage to 92?
Yeah.
I get it, okay.
Recommend, thank you.
Have you looked at CAFRA impervious coverage to make sure it's consistent?
I have, I haven't gone through that exercise with these guys. I think they're working on that with their engineers.
Yeah, just, we don't need to make a deal over here, but I just want to make sure that there's no limitation on the CAFRA level. It's below.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there any room for the rear yard to go to 10 feet?
No, I think we have the same issue. If it increases by 10 feet, I mean, certainly that's something the board can discuss with the developer, but given the unit sizes and what we have in place already, if it's increased to 10 feet, we're either going to be taking two feet away from the parking spaces or the aisle width.
Or the retail stores.
Or the retail stores, and that's why I say it's.
They don't like, they don't like these stores.
Yeah, I think that if the board's interested in greater setbacks, I would recommend that you prioritize and let me know whether your priority is the front yard setback or the rear yard setback.
Because, you know, the rear yard setback on two extra feet would reduce your impervious, too.
Yeah, it would reduce the impervious cover.
Only in the ground floor. Well, so the building elevation, remember the building, residential part of the building steps back. The ground floor has the biggest part of the footprint.
Yeah, but you're reducing it by two feet.
So you have to see it out of the parking area or you're seeing it out of the.
The stores.
Well, is there a way that they, that we could state it that just says, can they look into it to see what can happen? What are the possibilities?
I think the board can make that recommendation.
Yeah, I think that we can make the recommendation.
If we possibly increase the blank yard setbacks.
Some to, some to set back to, from eight to 10. Is it possible?
Well, what's the collective thoughts of?
Does the board feel that we should include? Does the the board feel that we should include that?
I can make an increase to front or rear yard setbacks, whatever you want me to put down.
Are they just all recommendations?
Yes.
Yes, recommendations.
The only thing is, some people know it, some people don't know it. We did the same thing as we did with the Braverman Building. We had a public hearing, we notified everybody within 200 feet. So the residents that lived back there came, listened, and heard a 10-foot setback. Now, if we're going to change that, you guys listen to them, I'm not.
No, but this is, this is, they're giving us eight. And the thing is, is that we're asking, can they do more? Not to do maybe 10 or 9 or something to give us, to give us a better uh setback.
Okay, if it's all recommendations.
It's a recommendation. It's a recommendation.
Okay.
I would, I would pick devil's advocate and say, I think because of the way it's designed with all of the pervious space along Asbury Avenue, and I know that's not guaranteed because it's a county right away, but that, I mean, it doesn't technically count, but practically, uh, from a front yard perspective, there is going to be, you know, however wide that is, five, six-foot wide.
A frontage that's, it will feel larger.
Looks like a setback.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
That's why we're hoping that the county gives it to us.
So I would, I would agree, it's like a front, a a front yard setback greater than zero feet. Because there's practically one, even though there's technically not.
Okay.
What would you like me to do? I say rear.
I think rear.
Well, that is the only place you're going to pick up land area that'll contribute to onsite impervious.
Anyone opposed to that? Possible looking into the rear yard, increase the rear yard setback?
I am, I think it's going to definitely interest the project.
You got one negative. Anybody in favor? How about give me a show of hands?
What, in favor?
Of of increasing the rear yard setback? Two.
Three.
Three. Three, who's three?
Who's the close?
Jim.
Oh, I don't see Jim. Jim, you're below. You gotta stick your own way.
All right, so then it's a, so it's a no.
That's a no.
Okay.
We don't have him to join.
All right, it's fine.
So what, you want me to just leave it out?
No.
Okay.
The the board does not agree, so it's okay.
Uh, okay, do you want a review of the uh loading and unloaded areas again?
Mm-hmm.
What the explore options on that? Uh, parking spaces, recommendation that the parking spaces be used exclusively by the tenants, there's no public parking?
Right, and the the reservation of those, the the zip cars and that, is that that, with that one?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Okay, go ahead.
That's, I don't have that one. I don't know what, I was totally confused on what the board wants to do.
That was going to change to the recommendation rather than.
Yeah, a recommendation as opposed to a requirement.
Yeah, a consideration perhaps.
A consideration, yes.
Yep.
It's not required.
Recommend that the bicycle storage spaces uh be increased.
Increased, yes.
Uh, in addition to cloth awnings, uh, cloth, cloth awnings, allow for canopies and overhangs with uh openings, is that, did I characterize that correctly?
Is that right, correct? The canopies?
Yeah, that's, yeah, just to make sure it doesn't require awnings over some other architectural.
And you want me to make the zip car?
Yeah, that's a recommendation.
Yeah, it's consideration for the board.
It's a consideration, right, it's not.
Consideration.
Hmm? It's not forward. Anything else?
Versus a required. Okay, that's what I have.
What was the last item, I'm sorry?
Uh, make a zip cars consideration versus a requirement.
Great.
And um. No, I did not.
Oh, no, that that has to, that's the same sustainability item is for site plan, isn't it? It's not here, right? Or tell me, I I don't know.
We have to soften whether it's a requirement or how it, the mechanism for enforcement.
But isn't that during site plan?
I think that's a, unless the board tells me that you that you don't favor the requirement set forth, I think that enforcement of it is going to be a site plan issue.
But are you okay with that, Jim?
Yeah, absolutely, I just wanted, it says requirement, I mean, it's under requirement and it says successful participation, which I read as not just signing up.
And maybe that's the language, the successful participation, but maybe it's, uh, I'll think about it, but maybe demonstration of.
Yes.
And then that would facilitate.
But make that harder language.
Yeah.
The harder language of the sustainability. You, you, Beth, Beth can tell you.
Yeah, demonstration, let me find this language. Right now, item K1 states successful participation in the Energy Star multifamily program. And then it goes on. Uh, and I think that should be changed to uh demonstration of participation in the Energy Star multifamily blah 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 program.
Or is it, or is demonstration of successful participation? I mean, are we trying to say that they have to complete it and get?
I think we're basically saying they need to get the points. They need to submit what HMFA requires for energy efficiency pursuant to the Energy Star multifamily program. And.
I know it's tricky because it's not going to be built at the time of site plan.
I I think participation, yeah, participation is probably not the right word. It's demonstrate, maybe demonstrate compliance with.
Compliance, that's the word, that's what I'm trying to say.
Demonstrating compliance, that's a, that's a, those are good words.
Yeah, demonstrating compliance. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, anyone?
We're talking about sustainability. I know it says something about a sustainable roof needs to be provided. Um, because we were talking about pervious coverage before. If there's a requirement for a green roof, would that contribute to pervious coverage?
Does the city count green roofs towards impervious?
It did, no. No. I don't think the city does that.
Okay.
No. You could develop it for a percentage.
I think it requires.
How you reuse the water?
Yeah, it requires a lot more.
Water system?
Yeah, it requires potentially uh more thought into what exactly they do with the water that they're collecting.
May also increase your structural load on those particular roofs.
I I like the idea of allowing them to do a green roof. Um, but I'm a little wary of requiring that they uh that they use that from from an environmental perspective to to offset their impervious cover. I mean, there's certainly going to be environmental benefits from it um under most any scenario, but it starts to get a little complicated and potentially costly for this, I hate to keep saying it, but this affordable housing development.
All right, anybody else have any others for the greater good?
I just want to make sure that, I mean, I think it's, I think it's fine, I just want to say out loud that the um, it says cool white roof or a green roof, which is fine. But I would not want it to see it be that they're saying, okay, it's a green roof. I mean, if it's all cool white roof, that's fine, but if it's just a regular dark-colored roof and then the green roof is one of those amenity things, at, meaning like the little, it has to be an actual green roof, not just.
I see what you're saying, so not just, not just a a fake turf roof for for residents essentially.
Exactly.
So does it have to be defined somewhere like by the.
The term, you could use intensive or extensive, those are the two types of green roofs.
So we were putting that in there too? All right, so Jack, are you okay with that?
Um, if you'd.
Go ahead. The specific word?
Yeah, uh, let me, yeah, let me.
Roof is which?
Or could it be like just an asterisk defining green roof?
Yeah, let me, maybe the recommendation could be, uh, the redevelopment plan should provide further guidance as to the environmental, the environmental benefit, that the green roof shall serve an environmental rather than recreational benefit.
Or cosmetic or aesthetic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it, but I think the key word is has to serve an environmental purpose rather than aesthetic, recreation, cosmetic.
Right, it sets a function.
It would definitely want to offset the stormwater. It's more likely to impact heat out of the act than anything else.
All right, anybody else?
Did we cover the bike parking?
We did, we did, yes.
Bus shelter.
Anything else?
Bus shelter, thank you. And I have a note that the right-of-way management needs a discussion from us and needs some uh language amendment, but let's add the bu- uh bus shelter to that as well.
Anything else for the greater good? Okay.
Fair to assume that for the most part, with the exception of these recommendations, the plan is consistent with the master plan? Anyone opposed to that?
Anyone opposed to that? Okay. Can we get a uh?
A motion?
A motion to approve this, this uh, this redevelopment plan with the conditions mentioned?
Some of.
Conditions or recommendations?
The recommendations, the recommendations mentioned.
It's going to be couched in recommendations, not conditions.
Yes.
Second? Who's the second?
I'll second.
So the bar of a person for a second?
Yep, I believe Eric.
Whoever you want, for a roll?
James Benano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Eric Gallopa?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Abstain.
Abstain. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Daniel Shanameo?
Yeah, before I get my vote, I just want to say, I, you know, personally, I think we have to stop doing these spot redevelopment plans and I really have a problem with the pilot payments that keep on, you know, when you do these, you're letting these projects not pay for school taxes and the rest of us have to pay the cost. And everybody wants affordable housing and this has a large component, so I'll vote yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Chairwoman Barbra Kerzak? Yes. Okay.
So we have eight affirmative votes and one abstention?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, um, can I get a motion for five minutes? Five-minute recess?
So move.
Okay. All in favor? Aye, aye. All right, five minutes, please, let's keep it tight. And we are back, we will be taking roll call now. Um, James Benano? Councilwoman Clayton? Eric Gallopa? Jim Henry?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Daniel Shanameo? Jennifer Souter?
Here.
Michael Gunnin?
Here.
And Chairwoman Kerzak?
Here.
Okay. Okay, our next application, 208 Main Street.
We have two or six to proceed, the notices are in progress.
Excellent.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George McHale, I'm an attorney and I represent 208 Main Street Realty LLC. With me tonight is Mary McGillen, she's the principal of the LLC. And everybody should know the property as Johnny Max. So um, I'll just start off with a little history here. This application originally received approvals back in 2013. Uh, in 2015, we received another set of approvals which consolidated the timeline in which we had to uh complete this project. So when we were on essentially what was phase two of that project, the builder undermined the Kinmet Building, which is the Sackman Building right to the east of our property, which put two years of delay on on the project, it was in litigation. So we came here before the board at that time, in 2017, and asked for permission to put up a temporary tent so that we could make use of the property while that litigation was being worked out. So that essentially was worked out, uh, it was settled. The work still isn't done over there, uh, and that's, that's that's in the process of getting done whenever Mr. Sackman gives us a uh, a plan. I'm not blaming anybody, I'm not involved, wasn't involved in that litigation. But essentially, when they want to do the work, they can do the work. But more to the point, uh, the reason why we are here is because we filed an application in 2019 as we were required to do. Um, and we were actually scheduled, you heard on June 15th, we went through all the preliminaries with the, uh, at that time, we were doing it virtually. So we went through all that with Irene, Irina and Jack and our experts. And uh, June 15th came around and we asked for an adjournment because we needed to address some of the comments in the planning and engineering report. So we did request that, we received that adjournment, and then John McGillian passed away on July 12th, 2020. Uh, and then what happened is John's estate unfortunately uh went into litigation. Uh, in November of 2020, Order to Show Cause was filed in pre-hold, it's before Judge Quinn, it remains before Judge Quinn. And I was talking to the attorney today who's handling that matter and he tells me that Judge Quinn has a uh, a case management conference, a scheduling conference actually, for first weekend night, at which time he's going to set a trial date. So we are expecting a trial date um in that matter. Probably by the end of the year. We think that the judge wants to clear this office docket by this year. I'm not handling that litigation, um, but nonetheless, that's why the property has not been developed um in accordance with the approvals that we have. And right now, we're looking, we're coming back to you to ask you for, uh, if we could use the property right next to the uh 228 building, which was old Castro electric, um, and the uh, and the existing beer garden. It's it's an empty piece of property, uh, Mary used that during COVID as a tented area. But um, after COVID went its course, uh, the city no longer allowed the tents. So we're looking to make use of that property as we were during COVID, um, essentially. Now, it's not the same uh setup. We uh, we're looking uh to have a tent that's essentially year-round, has to have certain loading, uh, capacity, snow loading, that kind of thing. Uh, and we do have that design. So uh, we're looking for a year-round tent so we can use that property. And uh, we're asking for two years because uh, by two years and sooner hopefully by the end of this year, um, subject to appeals, we will know where we stand. Because the the property is the subject of various claims and at this point, we simply have to maintain the status quo as far as building anything that's substantial. So we don't, we don't look at this ten as substantial, just trying to make the uh use of the property. So I have Mary here with me. Um, I promised her that I would have her say as little as possible. John was always with me, uh, but now Mary's here and so uh, Mary, I think we'll swear you in if you can just confirm everything that I've said. I think uh, I think we'll do that if we can.
Please raise your right hand. So I'm sure you can, you saw me swear a testimony about giving this knowledge of the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your affiliation with the application. You can put your hand.
Uh, Mary McGillen, MCGILLION.
So Mary, you can sit down. So Mary, you heard what I just said to the board, right? And uh, John's estate is still in litigation, is that correct?
It is, yes.
And uh, you're hoping for a resolution by the end of this year?
I hope so, yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so um, at this point, you're looking to put the tent up?
Yes.
And that's to, so you can use that empty um area?
Area, yes.
Okay, and you used that property in the past with the tent?
Yes.
And that was during COVID?
And previous to that too.
Okay, and um, so we're essentially looking to do that again, is that fair? All right. Um, that's all I have. You're certainly entitled to ask questions of Mary, um, but that's, that's pretty much it that I have for Mary.
Any questions from the planning board members of the witness?
I have a question for for George, if I may. You indicated that uh, the work that Sackman was supposed to do, excuse me, he has been, the court has approved his continuation of whatever he has to do to remediate that site his continuation of whatever he has to do to remediate that site with the undermining of the building?
Well, yeah, it, it was subject to a settlement and...
Whatever.
Yeah, and he's entitled to come onto Mary's property, and we still have to maintain that area so that he can. Again, I'm not trying to cop out, but I didn't handle that litigation. But my understanding is that we're waiting for a, a plan to tell us what he needs to do and how, how he's going to do it. You know, I, I think we forget, but, you know, COVID did, I guess, put everybody on hold. I can't speak for their side, but we haven't received it yet, but when we do, you know, they're certainly entitled. And, and to be honest with the board, we're, we're not really pushing it because this, the estate's in litigation and we simply just don't need other issues at this point because, you know, it, it's very contentious. So, it's kind of to our benefit that they haven't done anything. It's certainly not something we agreed upon, but, you know, we hope to get to that. We hope to resolve the estate, resolve the Sacman issue, and then hopefully build something there.
So, when you, I'm sorry, Dan. When you, uh, get to that point, you go back to, I think it was at Phase Two, Three, and Four that you were doing that construction? That is when you're going to start that? Pick up that construction and start it again?
Yeah, I, I would think so, and we're going to have to look at that, you know, against how the estate shakes out. So, yeah, but I, I think to answer your question directly, yeah, that, that's, that's the intent.
So, the major impediment for not going forward is the estate litigation?
Right.
Does that affect the Bistro, the Bistro eligibility?
228 is, is, is its own entity, same principles, but it's a different LLC, so, no. That, that, that's not affected. Oh, no, 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 I, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, that, that, that's part of the claims, too, in, in the, but, but you have been building 228 to a degree, right?
We built it up until this litigation started, yes, and we stopped.
Okay.
So, we're waiting for that.
Yeah, I, I misspoke, I'm sorry.
If I may, the, the proposed tent, is that in the location of the original tent that was approved?
Um, no, it's a different, it's a different tent. It's bigger.
What happened to the original tent that was approved back in 13, 15, whatever it was? Was that ever built?
That, there, there was a tent built. We did get approvals.
Yes.
And I think, uh...
And then it came down?
Yeah, then it came down.
Alright, so that's not this? This is, this is something different? Okay, different dimensions and the like, it's something different?
Right, right.
I just want to make sure, I'm trying to get all the things in sequence.
Yeah, we're not looking for like a continuation of the old approvals. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a more substantial tent.
No, again, I, I read the terms.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, I understand.
Any other questions from either the professionals or the planning board members of the witness? Okay, any questions from the public of the witness? No? Okay, thank you. Next.
You're done. You may, you may now vacate the seat. Okay.
So, I couldn't keep John out of this seat, and now I have to like fight Mary to get into it. Okay, so I would like to call Carolyn Fagan, our engineer. She's been on this project since the beginning, so, if we could have first one?
Raise your right hand. How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Good, good to see you. You solemnly swear a testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and let us know that you're still a licensed professional engineer in good standing and your affiliation with the project.
Sure. Carolyn Fagan, F as in Frank, E I G I N, with A R H Associates now. Last time I was before this board, it was not. I am a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey in good standing. I'm a planner as well. And I have been the engineer on this job since 2012, so I've been before this board quite a few times.
Sound good?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay.
Okay.
You're up.
Okay.
Okay, so Carolyn, you have prepared plans, the plans for the tent in this matter, right?
Yes, I have.
And are those the plans there?
Yes.
How about if we mark A1?
Do we need to mark that as A1?
Okay. It's Sheet Four or Five from the site plans, eh?
Mary, do you have stickers that you use for this? No?
Um, I do. We actually just reordered some, so I will have more.
The witness is in for A1 for tonight.
A1, yes.
There's going to be an A2, you want?
Sure, let's, let's mark A2.
Mark the tent specs as A2?
A2.
Okay, thank you. So Carolyn, why don't we trade places here and take us through your plans?
Sure.
Just bring it as close as you can, the best we can.
Okay.
And shout.
Back and in, yes, and shout.
Okay. I can shout, don't worry. Bring us a little bit.
So, again, the site is Johnny Macs. We're right across the street here at 208 Main Street. Plan north is in this direction. Here's Main Street, and we're sitting right here right now in this building. The existing Johnny Mac building is here on the right side of the plan or the south side of the lot. Years back, we got approval to build the permanent outdoor bar that's there. And now, we'd like to propose some improvements on this north side of the lot. Proposed in this area is a approximately 41 by 61-foot tent enclosure. We did submit calculations, or we have calculations if they weren't submitted, for the wind load and snow load and all that to be allowed to keep that up permanently, well, not permanently, but for two solid years, so through the winter. We are also proposing under there a 21 by 14-foot approximately size bar, which will be right underneath in the center. At the rear of the area would be a temporary restroom trailer. Those dimensions are seven by 14. It's elevated, so it would have a couple of steps up with a small deck platform to get you into both doors for the men's and ladies' room.
Is that under the tent or is it outside the tent?
Uh, it's outside the tent. The gray shaded area, if you could see it, are the limits of the tent, and this is outside the tent, and there's doors here. The tent has doors on it to be able to get access out there to the, to the restroom. We would like to get approval for this temporary bar, which is here as well. That is seven and a half by nine and a half feet. It's up about, it's a couple of feet from the property line right now. We're going to straighten it out. It'll be a little over three feet from the property line up the front there on the northwest side of the lot. Also, in this area is trash enclosure. We'd like to just get all this approved tonight in their location. There's an existing six-foot fence here that kind of separates the back area. Again, this is what George referred to with the work zone for the repairs to the Sacman Building. We'll be pushing that back a little further to be aligned with the back of the 228 Building. And I believe that needs to be increased to eight feet per 2018 resolution, so we'll do that at the same time. The plans do say six foot now. I was just intending on moving it back, but then when we got the review letter, we were reminded to make that an eight-foot fence. We'll be expanding the concrete paver area back about 11 feet or so, and then we'll be surrounding that with a strip of gravel about two to three feet all the way around the perimeter of that. And also, a side note, there is gravel surrounding the, there's concrete pavers there now. They're about two by two blocks. And then, we will be extending utilities to the restroom trailer. There's existing sewer and water out here at this bar that's outside already. So, we'd like to pick those up and tie in to the water line, and then the sewer will, yeah, we'll bring the sewer out the back. There's already an existing line, and that goes through out here to Coopman. There's an existing line back here that this all ties into, and we'd just like to add on to that for the, for the sewer line. And that pretty much describes what we'd like to propose in the lot.
Because that's here on the plan, is that the fence, is it fenced then?
The, along this way or which way? Sorry.
Well, I guess, I see the, I don't know if the hashed lines, it says proposed six high board onboard wood fence.
Yes.
So, is, is there a fence on Main Street?
Yeah, there is a fence along Main Street, yes. The property is fenced.
So, how long will the fence go?
I mean, the entire frontage is going to be fenced right now. There's some green temporary-looking construction fence out there, but we'll be matching it with the board-on-board that goes across the frontage of the existing.
So, how do you get it to the tent area?
There's gates. There's, oh, into the tent, the tent will have gates as well. And during the nice months, the tent will just be overhead and all of the walls will come down.
So, like where are the gates giving access? Is it access directly from Main Street or is it from the inside Johnny Macs of the property?
You get inside Johnny Macs, there'll be a, a gate, like a door in the fence, in, in the tent, sorry, excuse me. There'll be, uh, doors here in the front of the tent. There's doors in the back to get out to the restroom, and there'll be a set of doors here that will allow access into where this bar is. So, I, you know what, I'm going to go to A2. This may help a little bit. This detail is on Sheet Five or Five, but we blew it up a little bit so you can get a perspective view of the tent.
Yeah, but that door, the, if you go back to the other thing, the bar is backing right up to Main Street?
This bar here almost backs up to Main Street. There'll be about three feet separation to the property line.
But it won't be visible?
Well, it's about 10 feet high, so this fence is six feet high. You can see the top of it if you're standing in front of it, yes.
So, so the bar is going to be four feet higher, visible from Main Street?
Yes, it is now. It's there now.
This separate, this separate little bar?
Yes, yes.
So, this bar is there now?
Yes.
What's the purpose of having, having two bars within 20 feet of each other?
I think just more places for people to congregate and, you know, if the lines are long, you know, easier access for customers.
If I may, you may swear in our status.
Go.
Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear a testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board.
John Miller, board planner.
Jason Fitzgerald, board engineer.
Thank you.
So, if, if you'll allow me?
Sure.
I have a question about that. So, um, that, that little two-shed building that's out there now is going to be repurposed and reoriented? And it's going to be a bar?
Yes.
Okay. And it's going to be on the inside of the fence? And it's accessed from the tent or from the side, from inside the tent or from the street?
I think it's going to, it's going to be accessed, no, no access from the street.
Okay.
Yeah, no access from the street at all. It'll be from the inside. The doors on the tent need to be oriented so that during the winter months, when the tent walls are surrounding, you'll have access to get to the bars, to the bathroom, and to this area here.
Okay, and so then, again, to get, if I want to go into that space?
In, in this area?
There's a hole in the fence through a gate?
So, I don't know if this helps at all.
Yeah, it's a challenge.
Okay. There's a couple of doors on the front and back and the one side.
But that's not the side of the door?
Side not Main Street. Yes.
And then walking up?
Oh, okay, how will you get into this area? So, right now, there are gates along the front now, and you can get into that. You'll be able to get in through here. And there is a gate here as well. Right in between the bar and the trash enclosure, there's a panic bar and a gate there as well. It's three, about three or four feet wide, right in between.
But is that like a primary access or like an emergency exit?
I have a feeling the primary access is going to be on this side, but I should check the primary, on the existing side. Okay, the primary access will remain where the bar is now, or the south side of the lot.
So, that will only be an emergency exit?
Um, I believe we needed to have that for egress, so, yeah, that was years ago.
So, it will only be an emergency exit?
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
It won't be open during, I mean, I don't want to swear that it will never be open.
There will be people living now in this lot, Main Street.
I don't think so. This is going to be the main area on the south side.
So, once again, when we're talking about what's facing Main Street, we're looking at a temporary bar that is four feet higher than the fence?
The fence has a roof structure that's higher.
Right, but it's four feet higher.
Yeah, yeah, about.
And we also have a trash room, trash enclosure that looks like it's eight feet higher.
No, it's seven and a half feet by fourteen.
Because it's seven and a half, oh, seven and a half by fourteen.
You don't see it.
So, it's a foot and a half higher.
No, the seven and a half is the deck from the property.
Alright, so how high is that trash enclosure or is there none? You, not visible at all?
You don't see it from the six-foot board-on-board fence that's there. It's behind the board-on-board fence, and it stays below that elevation. You can't see it from the street.
So, the only thing we can see from the street directly is that extra, the little temporary bar?
Yes, the...
That's four foot higher.
I, I, I don't see on this, on the, on Four or Five, again, because I'm confused on what is the fence? It shows the trash enclosure outside the fence area. Are you saying there's a fence that goes directly across Main Street all the way?
Yes, there'll be board-on, yes. And the trash enclosure has its own fence to enclose it. So, that's why you see a double fence.
So, it's an internal fence?
Yes, and they can have...
They have access to it on this side, but it's fenced here, and this becomes the pathway out that gate. And this is enclosed there. There's like dumpsters and trash and whatnot in there, but enclosed.
Why not put the bar inside the tent?
Yeah, it's, that bar seems...
It's superfluous.
Honestly, it's somewhat portable. I mean, a lot of these are structures that have been, you know, moved around, but I don't know if it matters.
Three feet inside the fence.
Thirty-six inches?
Three feet from the fence.
Inside the tent, but right now, it's not inside the tent.
Thirty-six inches? So, there's, it's just a structure you're thinking about?
Yes, it's like a shed-type structure, like it's described, but, you know, they constructed it, and it has a bar top, and, you know, bartender can be behind it, customers, it has a little roof, you know, it's just a simple, I think it's seven and a half by nine and a half.
So, if I could, we get up, we'll move that structure inside the tent?
Yeah, because, I mean, you have a big bar inside, right?
Yeah. I mean, I can't testify for Mary, but she just told me that she intended to put it inside the tent.
Okay.
As counsel, you can make the representation of it.
Okay.
Or, thank you.
I can revise the plans to show as well, so we'll just make it...
Okay, so that, that bar will go almost nine feet in, based on this, these dimensions, it looks like?
Yes.
So, it'll go nine feet, which means it brings it underneath the tent?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not, not visible at all, well, it's not three feet away from Main Street?
Correct.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah, it'll still have the same height, but it'll be pushed back a bit, so it's minimized a little.
It's going to be inside of the tent?
Okay, it's going to be inside the tent, okay. Can I also ask?
Sure.
The back, I know that you'd mentioned that you need to leave some space for future work. That's enough space? Oh, that, that whole area back there?
There's the entire area.
Oh, that whole area has to be, okay. I thought it was something different.
I think part of the settlement, it was a thirty-foot...
So, that has to remain?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. And the access to the, to the trailer, to the bathroom, is also going through the tent? Through the middle of the tent?
The doors will, on the tenor, have to be six feet.
Right, but, but the only way you can get in there is you go through, through Johnny Macs into the tent and then to the bathroom?
Yes.
And no other way to get into that?
No.
Okay.
And there will be a fence along the hall.
Right, and there's a fence along there.
The building wall is here, so...
Okay. Okay.
As a gap of that accessibility, this is a different level than the southern part of the outdoor area. Is that correct? Different elevation?
This actually, you can walk right into here. I noticed that comment said these were at different elevations, but, um, it's not really much. I mean, I've walked this myself, like right in and out of here. There's a, a solid fence that's, that goes here, though. So, there really, this part is not going to be accessible from one to the other. The access will be this way, along the front side or the west side of the property.
That's just flat surface?
Yeah, there are concrete pavers that are there now, like about two...
Your plan has spot elevation?
Yes, yeah.
Seventeen, eighteen?
Yeah.
On the untented side, and it's fifteen on the concrete paver, so... And you're showing steps, so tell us how it works.
No, there's no seventeen, there shouldn't be any proposed seventeens in here.
No, it looks like an existing seventeen and an existing fifteen, and you're proposing steps up into the restroom trailer. So, tell us how it works.
Yeah, there are steps up into the restroom trailer, yes, but I still don't see a seventeen on here. All these are fifteens and sixteens.
Over, uh...
Sorry, I'm sorry.
So...
Where's the board says connected to the seventeen seventeen?
Okay. Yeah, there's, this is a, there's a fence here, and this is enclosed. We won't be doing anything back here, like people will not be, there, these two things are separated from each other by a pretty solid fence wall. This, this was started to be excavated years ago, and so there was a big hole back there for quite a while. That's how the settlement started. This was filled in a bit in order to get the pavers to this spot where they are, but while that was happening, a wall was installed here, so, like a fence, I shouldn't say a wall, but a fence, so there's no access between here and here. You won't, there will be, and no access back here at all in the work zone.
And where's the door going to be again, to get into the tent area for the doors?
We're going to have a door here that will allow you to get from the south side of bar into the north side bar, so there'll be a door on this side. There'll be one in the front and one in the back as well. Now that we're moving this bar in here, I imagine this door will be here on the northwest side, and then mirroring that right in the back here so you could get into the area for the restroom trailer.
The only access from the street is to the right, over there, right?
Yeah, yes.
You're not going to open up another means of access there?
There is a gate here now, but we're not going to use it. Right, it's only for emergency, it has a panic bar from the inside. There is a gate here now, but we're not going to use it, right. It's only for emergency. It has a panic bar from the inside. So this one will be the main point of access on the south side.
So that will be, that will be alarmed?
Um, I think it is alarmed. I feel like we had to do that through previous approvals and it has the exit lights with all the, um, the, yes. Right, yeah. That was part of prior approvals and I'm pretty sure that's what's out there now.
The bar that's already under the tent, that's what already exists in the, in the center of the tent?
It's there now. It's just covered up. It's kind, it's tarp'd up. She was, we were using that, uh, she was using that during COVID.
Yeah.
And now it's just kind of been sitting, um, because it's cold during the time.
All right.
Well, no, we're not done.
I was going to say, no, I have the professionals letters. I know we have to go through, but if there's any other questions.
Before we get to that, before we get to the professional letters, any other questions? No? Okay, let's go to the professional letters. Unless, unless Donna has something.
So what's the, what's the elevation of the restroom trailer? Like is there a, what's the reason?
It's set above grade, um, I guess just to have the gravity and work to that's just how the trailers come. They have to be elevated like that, the ones that we are using anyway to fit in this space, um. So the elevation, one, two, three, four, yeah, it'll be about two feet above grade. I can put an elevation on that, on the deck if you would like me to do that.
Okay, so
I put four risers, so it's going to be about two feet above grade.
So then, uh, so where did you say the, the doors on the tent are?
We're going to have a set of doors here on the tent. I think we're
Except when it's nice weather and you don't have walls?
There, there's no walls, yeah.
Okay, so are we doing anything to skirt the deck so we don't have any conflicts with underneath that deck?
Okay, you know, that, that's, that's totally fine. I believe there's probably something similar. There's a restroom trailer on the south side and that has steps to go up as well, so we can I know I have so many pictures and I've been there a lot, but I can't picture what's in the front of that, but, uh, we can do that, you know, add some type of skirting.
And again, so are any of these accessible?
Or any what?
The restrooms, no.
Any?
So none of the restroom trailers are accessible?
There's restrooms inside the building, but they're, no, they're, the ones that are outside are not accessible.
Could you fit a ramp instead of the four risers going in there and course the whole front?
Is one side girls and one side boys, basically?
Yeah, I think it's one side stairs.
Yes, I was doing, um, no, the ones in the back are just to get to an access utility room. There's, there's, there's no, um
Then they're just all on that
That, that's just for utility. Yeah, so you just walk up the front of these steps on the deck extends across the whole front of the trailer. So I, I mean, I would have to probably like wrap it around the back, but I think I could do that, you know.
Or push it more for the tent.
I, I think I'd probably rather go this way. If I have to do a ramp, I'm probably going to want to come out, but, you know, have a, a landing and a turn and a landing and a turn, so we could do that.
I hope so, either for people trying to
I don't know in Italian how many people have fallen down these stairs.
All right, shall we, should we, if there are any other questions or should we go through the letter?
Yes, Carol. You have both the engineers' and planners' letter, correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay, why don't you take us through, uh, the parts that you have to discuss?
Okay. I'll start with the, uh, board engineer's letter, which is dated March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and, um
We'll call that B1.
And, uh, statements of fact for the first couple pages, so I'm heading to the comments, which start on page three. Testimony shall be provided whether there's an increase in the proposed number of seats. Um, no, there wouldn't be. This space is still using the same exact, um, lot area from the previous approvals. We haven't increased that, um, so therefore I don't see any impact to any parking demands. Um, parking's based on square footage here and not even necessarily the, um, number of seats anyway, so there would be no change in parking. Um, we are not proposing any new signage as far as number two. Number three, uh, the lighting comment shows up on the engineers' as well as the planners' letters, so I'll try to address it, um, altogether. What's out there now is strand lighting or string lighting that is pretty much, um, you know, throughout the yard area. Once the tent's there, all of that strand lighting will be underneath the tent, um, so you really won't, I know in the picture on, um, your letter, you know, it obviously looks open and exposed to the outdoors, but the tent would be covering all of that now, so, you know, it's very low wattage, just small bulbs that are ambiance kind of, you know, there's a, a nice, um, vibe in there as far as the lighting goes. It's not going to be intense at all. The approval from, I believe, twenty eighteen for the temporary operations planned north, it was called at that time, did approve, um, string lights throughout the whole area there, so this is consistent with that. Okay, um, so, let's, uh, number four, yes, some of the site features are different. The design has just changed a little bit, so this is what we're proposing now. The, the one that was approved before is, um, I guess I'll say in the past, this is the current design right now. Going, um, number five, um, ongoing renovations, again, I think that put on the record, um, litigation has stalled some of that, but, um, we will provide the eight-foot fence between the work zone and the bar area, so that way we're in compliance with that two thousand eighteen resolution. Number six, I think George pretty much addressed that with, um, Mary as far as the litigation. Um, we don't quite have a timeframe yet, but maybe by the end of this year, we'll have a better understanding of what the future looks like here. Okay, so number seven, there is no increase in patron demand. Um, I think we're going to have to go through the fire official anyway before we can get building permits and whatnot, so I imagine that
So we can comply with that?
Yes, yes, yeah. Okay, so the utility connections, my plan shows, um, sewer and water going to both the restroom and the bar, but, um, I actually don't think we need them to the bar in speaking with Mrs. McGillian. Um, the bar doesn't have any running water or sewer in it. Only the restroom will need that, so, um, I don't, I'm actually going to revise the plans to show that, uh, there, we won't need that to the bar.
Well, we don't have any sinks in that bar, right?
There's no sinks in that bar. It's, uh, like an annex, like an auxiliary type of bar there, so, yeah.
Well, they just use plastic and they don't wash anything?
Yes, there's not going to be any glass. There's nothing washed. There's no dishwasher there. It's just, uh, everything's in plastic and, and, you know, gets into the garbage. It doesn't need to be washed there.
And whatever we do, we have to get the approval of the board to help it?
Yes, absolutely. And when the bar was operating there before with, there was no, it was the same situation, so there just wasn't a restroom. And I just want to also touch on the, the last line there about the underground beverage lines. Many years ago, uh, conduits were run from the north side of this block, from the two-twenty-eight lot through to the Johnny Mac building, the existing building, um, so that they would be able to keep all the kegs and whatnot in the two-twenty-eight basement and have, you know, somebody pull a tap somewhere, you know, far away and anyway, those, uh, beverage lines are very deep. They would have been ceiling height in a basement, so they're not going to be in conflict with any sewer or water that's going to go to this bathroom. They're still there. They're very deep.
Are they used? So is that what she
No. Uh-uh. Didn't come to fruition. Still there. The infrastructure's there for it, but, uh, you know, it's just they're not, they're not being used. Okay, number nine is about sewer and water. Um, again, we, um, had approvals for this building to go up four stories, a ton of, um, expansion here, which, you know, is obviously part of the litigation, but, um, at that time, this, we submitted reports to the board that were approved, um, showing that there was existing water and sewer capacity here. This plan would only be for the lower level, so it's much less than the use that is ultimately intended for the site. So we don't think there's going to be any problem with capacity. Um, there's a six-inch sewer line that I mentioned before. It was TV, it was videoed many, you know, not many, but years back, um, and it does come out to Cookman here. It actually goes underneath this building, we don't know. But the line was in good condition and fully operating six-inch. It has a nice pitch on it. I think it had somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred thousand gallons per day or something for, um, capacity, so there's not going to be an issue with, with, um, capacity.
So you think we're okay on that?
I, I do think we're okay, but if we need to show documentation, I know reports were submitted before, but I can, you know, I don't have them anymore because I left all my files, but, uh
Well, you're
Yeah. Okay, that's good. George had to give me a few old things too, so. Okay, so the trench drain, um, plans for the future development showed a trench drain on the west side of the lot right here. The intention for the future development of the space was all to pitch it from east to west. That's how the natural grade is going. The entire lot was previously impervious, so there was no increase in flow, um, but during previous rounds of design, we did install, um, floor drains around this bar. We put a manhole in, we tied it to the manhole that's out here in the Main Street right of way. Got approval from DOT to do this. So the infrastructure is here to put in future drainage, um, but right now, the way this part is pitched, there's like a high point right here and most of this is running to the back. Only a small amount comes to the front here, um, and that trench drain is under, would be under the, um, trash enclosure right now. So we actually are asking that the trench drain be still installed in the future, but potentially it's not really needed now. There's only a small amount runoff that comes towards the front. And the back, um, is going to be surrounded, well, first of all, there are pavers, so there is a little bit of, um, runoff that will get through the perimeter of each of the blocks. But then at the back, I put this, uh, gravel surrounding the paver block, so that way that will intercept any runoff from, from moving on and allow it to infiltrate into the ground, so I don't, you know, we're asking if we can continue to hold on that trench drain, um, you know, as I don't really think it's necessary now. And I believe that the back of it is pretty much handled by that gravel strip. The soil is sandy. We've had soil tests down there. Um, the water table, I believe, is below, uh, six feet below ground, so we don't have an issue with that. But they did ask for additional spot grading and any details, so I can certainly, we don't want to change the grades there. I can add some spots along the back though, where we're proposing that expanded paper area. I don't know if that's okay. Okay. Okay, um, eleven, of course, we agree. Um, twelve, if there are sewer connection fees, I'll investigate that. Uh, structural engineering review, um, okay, that's deferred to the construction official. DOT, we're not doing any improvements within the DOT right of way, so I don't think this time we're going to need to go back to DOT. We have had approvals from them before, um, for various, um, work that was being done, but this is all going to be behind the property line. As regarding location, if possible, of any screening or exterior mechanical equipment, um, there's really none that's going to be out there. It's the bar and there's some tables that are proposed out, but they're, they're there.
But you're heating the, in the winter, you're heating the tent?
The tent will be heated, yes. Yeah, I think that's inherent in the tent. I don't know exactly how it operates, to be honest with you.
Radiant heaters?
Electric. So electric heating?
Thanks, man. And I think that kind of wraps up Mr. Fitzgerald's letter. So I'll move on to Ms. Miller's, the planner's letter, um, which is dated in March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
E2.
E2, thank you.
I don't know that there's really much to go over. I
Okay.
Understand the thing about the, you know, the light's going to be under the tent. That's my biggest concern.
Okay. Okay, I think Okay, I saw one. I just want to put on the record about the fence.
If you're good, I'm good.
Okay.
They're good.
Okay.
We'll listen. Some actary issues or something there?
Yeah, I, I know some of the comments were Thank you.
So we're okay with the fencing? Because you had a concern about fencing?
Well, I think they still need the, the relief, but it's obviously, you know, what it is.
Yeah, we would like to continue to make
So we better understand that there's not like, you know, a point of access or entrance to the tent from there. And they moved the, that bar, so.
Do, is there anything else? No, I'm good, thank you. Okay, is there, do we have any, any planning board members have any questions that they would like to ask? You're okay? Our members, our, uh, our favor, our professionals, we okay? You guys okay? All right, can I open up the, uh, open up for any public questions of the, of the witness? No? No, really? Okay. All right, um, next?
Motion for public comment.
Uh, Matt, Chair, that's it?
Are we done? This is it?
We're all done.
Okay.
We just did cross, uh, do we do comments as well?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
Not yet, we're going to do that. Can I, uh, can I get a motion to open for public comment?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Aye. Anyone in the
Motion to close.
Okay.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Close. Eyes out.
Okay. All right, do we have, um, Jack, you want to?
Sure.
Get it started?
Conditions of approval, it's for two years. Can, can I just ask a question? And it's a crazy world with litigation, everything. That's all you want, two years? Are you positive? I mean, don't come back two years from now and say, geez, we should have asked for three.
Well, I, I had, I had anticipated actually i- if we needed to, to come back and explain why we needed to and if we didn't, um, need to not to, uh, have to, so.
Okay.
But, um
Are you sure you want to ask for two?
No, I, I'd like to ask for more, actually.
What's your limit?
Can we do like two with the option to renew or something like that? Because they don't have to come back?
Without having to come back, without having to come back?
Without having them to come back?
Three.
Okay, so change it to three.
Many applications do it for three.
Let's do it for three. Thank you.
Let's do it for three.
You're not going to argue?
Unless litigation is settled sooner and then, uh
Right, I mean
Well, it's to your advantage to continue your progress.
Yes.
All approvals, all the conditions of the prior approval is not affected by this, uh, approval, are still unaffected, of course. The, uh, the, just to fend, I'll, I'll get this from Donna, but the fence, I, it, to eight feet in, uh, areas in the back or wherever you were requesting it to be at eight feet. Any state approval or outside agency approval, which I'll run by Jason for DOT and the like. Uh, small temporary bar, seven and a half feet by nine and a half feet is now to be relocated inside of the tent. Install skirting around the new restroom trailer. Existing lights that are shown on the photo in Donna's report, the string lights are to be located under the tent, so they will be visible. Okay, Jason's comment, the, uh, eight-foot, uh, I think that's eight-foot fence in number five on page three is his report. There's also a comment in Jason's report for page seven, or excuse me, number, page three, number seven, I think that's the fire inspector's capacity, uh, reports sewer connection fees if any, uh, DOT if required. I don't want to know that, okay. Where's the skirting?
You can do that.
And make it handicap. Yeah, we have a fence design exception, which is already Nobody there is excellent. And then
So Dan is asking, should we actually make a condition that there should be no primary access to the tent area for Main Street?
Absolutely.
You'd like?
Absolutely.
It's part of the record, it's included, but
Right, it's an emergency exit.
Right.
And I don't know if we need to do this or not, but I know that there was a modification there where we no longer need water and sewage to the actual bar. That's just a change in the plan, right? You're just going to make a modification? That's not a, it's not a condition, it's just a change in the plan that you'll fix.
I've got a question for Jason. Are you comfortable with the, uh, the tent as presented? And we just went through this, uh, recently with, uh, the, uh, Asbury and, and the requirements that we, uh, had with them concerning, uh, maintenance of the tent. Do you think that those requirements should be added here?
That was up and down, the Asbury was going to be up and down, so.
Yeah, this, this one's permanent, this one's a little, little different.
This is going to be a little bit, a little bit more of a, more of a structure than
Yeah, I mean, Carolyn mentioned it's going to be designed for wind loads and snow loads and that kind of thing, so it's more temp, uh, permanent in nature, even though it's temporary. It's like a permanent structure, so yeah, I think this will be rough, so.
Is this also one of those where we need the pre-construction meeting or is this not?
I was going to bring that up when Jack was done.
Okay.
Sure, pre-construction meeting?
Well, so so that, that's, uh, something we talked about then moving forward on every application. If you guys feel it's necessary here, I'm happy to do it.
That's, that's up to you. That's, do we feel that, that it's necessary for a pre-construction meeting to, to happen before you do anything?
I think it might be a good idea so that everybody's well versed on, you know, how the back of the property needs to be reserved and you have this drifting backwards. Carolyn, uh, also noted that there's a slight adjustment, remember the, the, or the, uh, so it winds up with the back of the Mariner Bank building? And, um
I, I would always prefer that so that all of you are on the same page and you, and we all know when you're starting. I, I would always prefer that, so that all of you are on the same page and you, and we all know when you're starting. Because a lot of times, we don't know when you're starting.
How we're using the public space, how we're using Main Street to, for those purposes, yeah.
I would also like, um, again, as a practice moving forward, everything, I'd like to have all the plans signed that were submitted, so the site plan plus the, the tent plan that you presented.
The, just the tent detail is on sheet five. It's the same thing that's on sheet five, we just pulled it up so I could show it to the board. Yeah, it's, so it's in the signed set of plans.
That wouldn't be a condition of approval, let's just be.
Just process.
Procedures.
Okay. All right. Anybody else?
No, okay, I wrote it down. Yep, I wrote it down.
All right.
No problem.
Excuse me, Mary.
Did you hear that, Mary?
Say that loud, who's marrying here then?
All right, can I get a, uh, a motion to approve this application with the conditions mentioned?
Who's allowed to vote on this?
All of you.
All, all of us.
Everyone.
All of us.
Motion to approve with notification.
All right, I'll second it.
James Manano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Eric Galloppo?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Daniel Shanameau?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Michael Gunean?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kruzak?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So move, second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.